Welcome to the second hearing of the Standing Committee on State Development, Inquiry into the Feasibility of Undergrounding the Transmission Infrastructure for Renewable Energy Projects. I acknowledge the Wurundjeri people, the traditional custodians on the lands on which we are meeting today. I pay my respects to elders past and present and celebrate the diversity of Aboriginal people and their ongoing cultures and connections to the lands and waters of New South Wales. I also acknowledge and pay my respects to any Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people joining us here today. Today we will be hearing from a number of stakeholders. I thank everyone for making the time to give evidence to this important inquiry. Before we commence, I would like to make some brief comments about the procedures for today's hearing. Today's hearing is being broadcast live via the Parliament's website. A transcript of today's hearing will be placed on the committee's website when it becomes available. In accordance with the broadcasting guidelines, the House has authorised the filming, broadcasting and photography of committee proceedings by representatives of media organisations from any position in this room and by any member of the public from any position in the audience. Any person filming or photographing proceedings must take responsibility for the proper use of that material. This is detailed in the broadcasting resolution, a copy of which is available from the secretariat. While parliamentary privilege applies to witnesses giving evidence today, it does not apply to what witnesses say outside of their evidence at this hearing. I therefore urge witnesses to be careful about comments you may make to the media or to others after you complete your evidence. Committee hearings are not intended to provide a forum for people to make adverse reflections about others under the protection of parliamentary privilege. In that regard, it is important that witnesses focus on the issues raised by the inquiry's terms of reference and avoid naming individuals unnecessarily. All witnesses have a right to procedural fairness according to the procedural fairness resolution adopted by the House in 2018. If witnesses are unable to answer a question today and want more time to respond, they can take a question on notice. Written answers to questions on notice are to be provided within seven days. If witnesses wish to hand up documents, they should do so through the committee staff. Finally, could everyone please turn their mobile phones to silent for the duration of the hearing? I now welcome our first witnesses. For each witness, starting from my left, please state their name and position title and swear either an oath or affirmation.
Daryl Woods, Executive Manager of Major Projects for Wagga City Council. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Peter Thompson, General Manager of Wagga City Council. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Ian Chappie, Mayor of Snowy Valleys Council. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Julia Han, councillor of Snowy Valleys Council. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
James Hayes, councillor of Snowy Valleys Council. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Would any of you like to start by making a short statement? Please keep to no longer than a couple of minutes.
Chair, I'd like to make just a brief statement. I won't repeat the submission and waste time. Our submission is aimed at giving the inquiry evidence of our experience in relation to how decisions are made about the delivery of power lines. And the value of that, I believe, to the inquiry is that there's a whole question here about good government. And at Macquarie Street, you're charged with delivering good government to the state. As a council, we're charged with delivering the best government we can to our regional communities. As you'll see from our submission, we're not enjoying an environment of good government at the moment because the agency's making decisions about how power transmission is delivered isn't focusing on communities, it isn't focusing on impacts, it's not focusing on harm, it's focusing on other drivers, important though they may be. There's a whole cost that's not being taken into account. I would also point out, and then I'll stop, we have just undergrounded a power line ourselves, 132 kV A line in relation to one of the special activation precincts. So we can speak to that recent undergrounding experience, that's not mentioned in our submission.
Thank you. Anyone from Snowy Valleys?
Thank you very much, Chair. Morning and ladies and gentlemen. Just a bit of a background, I spent 22 years on the cutting edge of the telecommunications industry in Australia, turning the telephone network from manual to what it is today. So change is not something that I find difficult to cope with. You'd have to wonder why we're here today inquiring into long-distance transmission of electricity. I believe the decision should have been already made. High voltage DC underground is the future. If you want to live in the past with AC transmissions supported on a forest of massive towers, you are condemning the future of electricity users and the nation to a grossly inefficient transmission of power for years to come. And the landowners through whose country they pass to a life of misery and pain through a daily reminder of a society who could not see the future clear enough to make the right decision. The way of the future is high voltage DC underground. We've already chosen that path, the world has chosen that path. Basslink, Murraylink, Terra Noaya, the list goes on. The longest proposed ultra-high voltage DC link is 3,324 kilometres, 11,000 volts, transferring 12 gigawatts of power. High voltage DC is not new, it has already been around since the 1950s. But now today's technology has made the system of choice around the world. A so-called first-world country is contemplating extending our electricity grid with the use of high voltage AC above ground suspended on a massive steel structure waltzing across the countryside. Urban dwellers take for granted the reliability of electricity. That reliability depends on the secure transmission of power delivered from rural and remote parts of Australia as a result of the transition to renewable energy. And to a large extent, on peak, electricity coming from Snowy Hydro and the future Snowy 2.0 committed. To commit that reliability to overhead AC transmissions is a recipe for disaster. We can relate to Snowy Valleys Council area to the loss of power for 14 days, the southern part of the Snowy Valleys area, to the loss of power for 14 days as a result of the Shire being affected by the 2019-2020 bushfires. Can you imagine a situation like that in the city? A bit of history, in 1957, we had 60 voice telephony channels between Sydney and Melbourne. A decision to dig a trench 600 miles long from Sydney, Canberra to Melbourne and lay a coaxial cable in the trench 1.2 metres deep provided 960 channels of voice and a bidirectional TV relay network between Sydney and Melbourne. Those people who made that decision had vision, saw the future. There were no more poles, routes across Australia with a multiplicity of wires hanging on them. All telecommunications today is underground. The only decision we can make today is high voltage DC underground. Our whole way of life depends on electricity and we will become more dependent in the future with the renewable power source scattered across the country and the move towards electric vehicles. Our communications network is dependent on power. And the move away from fossil fuels will bring about a greater dependency on electricity. We need to reduce the risk of what happened in South Australia on the 20th of September 2016 when the state was effectively blacked out as a result of severe climatic events. With the climate change, the possibility of severe weather events such as storms, fire etcetera would appear to be an increasing possibility. The plethora of information on the merits of high voltage DC versus AC transmission and the visual and environmental land use benefits of underground speak for themselves. Snowy Valleys Council on behalf of and in conjunction with our community have lodged a submission. I am sure you will have a raft of information to digest. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you today. I hope we see the future, grasp the nettle, seize the day and do it once and do it properly. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move to questions, starting with the opposition.
Again, I've got about 15 minutes, is that correct? Just so I can spread out my time, thank you. I've only got a short period of time to ask questions, I've got a heap of questions, so I just want to make sure. My first set of questions will go to Wagga City Council, Mr Woods, Mr Thompson. In relation to your submission, and thank you very much for your submission, it was fantastic and very strong. Could you describe how you believe the TransGrid consultation process has been with affected landholders in the Wagga City Council area?
Do you mean in relation to their engagement with us?
Yes, and also the landholders?
In relation to their engagement with us, my comment on that would be the meetings have been cordial and they've been respectful at all times. What's been lacking from those meetings, though, is any sense by TransGrid that they need to listen to what we were pleading on behalf of our community. And the ultimate result for us was the compulsory acquisition of a 1.8 kilometre strip through one of the most valuable assets that our community owns. At one of the first meetings, to put an example in point, I said to them, please don't take our waste management facility, it is the most important asset that we own. It's like putting it through a hospital, you wouldn't put it through a hospital, don't put it through our waste management facility for what it does for the community and the difficulty in replacing it. Many months of negotiations followed after that conversation. They acquired the strip of land, they've sterilised 1.8 kilometres of waste facility. Nothing we could put in front of them, including underlining the power line in their existing easement through the facility which would have avoided any further acquisition actually made a difference. And I believe the reason for that is, as I've said in the submission, is that when they sit down to undertake that consultation, which I'll say was respectful and they had people of all descriptions come down and talk to us, but it was just talk. Because at the end of the day, they were very well aware that the compensation payable for what they've acquired was a very mere fraction of what the cost would be to us in replacing that. And while ever that cost assessment's on the table, they do not look at harm or cost that's happening off that particular ledger. I can speak to the community as well, I've sat on a veranda from people I've met outside again for the first time and they experienced a very similar experience from TransGrid in relation to that issue. And my final point would be, as I've said in the submission, I applaud the Standing Committee for the inquiry that they are undertaking. It's a worthwhile inquiry, but the challenge that you have is even if you determine that undergrounding power lines has efficacy, the challenge is that that particular outcome is not supported by the agencies currently making the decisions and they're empowered to make decisions which harm communities. Until you address that imbalance, determining what is technically feasible and delivering the right outcome from a good government perspective will elude both Macquarie Street and our local community.
So you've basically touched on, I think, the point that I was hoping we would get to, which is that the consultation process is sort of lacking. The regulator at the previous hearing indicated that there is a requirement that TransGrid consult with affected landholders and also the councils. However, it seems that the experience is that consultation is in effect telling you what you will get as opposed to asking you what you would like. Has that been the experience?
I would say that we did go through a charade of discussion and charade is a deliberately chosen word because I believe that's what it was. So it wasn't them sitting down and officiously telling us, you'll get what you're given and you'll be happy about that. There was definitely a charade of discussion, but it was no more than a charade. I don't think there was ever a commitment, an intent or a driver to avoid what was ultimately the decision, which is to put overhead power lines through.
I've already burnt through a third of my time, so I'm going to have to ask some really quick answers. So, Snowy Valleys Council, do you believe that the consultation process between your council and also the affected landholders that you represent was a genuine consultation process?
I've been on the Consultative Committee now for the last three years and I've gone along with a lot of people behind me and often come away with a lot more questions than answers, frustration, going, what was that, sitting there, blah, 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 this is what we're doing. Any questions? And you're still trying to work out what the first paragraph was about and then you moved on. I think that process has gradually improved slightly because we've made such a lot of noise about it. But of anything, I think most people come away very distressed and depressed after those consultation meetings.
And a revolving door of people. So the person you spoke to last time is not there, someone else here?
Mr Woods, Mr Thompson, is that the similar perspective that you would have?
Yes, the staff do rotate around.
Okay. I want to turn now to some of the other information we got from the last hearing, which was that part of the reason that was given for keeping the power lines overhead as opposed to undergrounding them was that it allows further and future renewable energy projects to be able to tap in easily because it is an AC line as opposed to a DC underground line. And if they're to tap in an AC renewable energy project, they'll need a converter station in effect built and that costs a lot more money. Mr Woods, Mr Thompson, could you provide the committee some insight into the renewable energy projects that have been proposed around the Wagga City Council area? And what those projects, being outside of the res but in effect being able to be tapped into existing infrastructure, have meant for the communities and also council in relation to approvals, consultation etcetera?
Briefly, they have been controversial in the community because they do sterilise large amounts of land. In our particular location, they're not wind farms, they're solar farms. And I would say that the community is divided in relation to whether they are a good thing or a bad thing. And in terms of benefit for the communities, I believe most of that power, if not all of that power, is actually sold out of the region. So it actually has no benefit in terms of delivering green power to our local community.
Does council have the opportunity to approve or not approve those projects? Or is it?
It depends on scale. For the most part, these projects are all large and they are planning panel approvals, not council approvals or state significant development, the two key approval pathways for the renewable energy projects.
So if we were to see something like HumLink built where the argument was made that we are in effect providing the opportunity for further and future renewable energy projects to be tapped in, what we could potentially see is a large-scale expansion of things like solar farms, wind farms along that route, effectively becoming a pseudo-res zone? Would that be something that you could see potentially happening, given that it's potentially already happening in some parts of the Wagga City Council electorate or area?
I'd comment on that?
Yeah, I don't think we really...
What I would say, though, is that our example, which is why we've given it to you as a submission, that argument that you've been given doesn't hold with a decision not to underground power in order to preserve a waste management facility. There will never be renewable energy connections to justify that overhead line. Whatever the motivation was for that, it's not going to be renewable energy connections. And so I would submit on behalf of everyone that follows me that you would need to review that comment with a degree of suspicion.
In relation to the actual excising of that tract of land that Wagga City Council had, what effect will that have on the population and the area in the future around not having that land available to council for waste management?
At its simplest, it will shorten the lifespan of a community facility that was acquired 30 years ago by compulsory process itself. And again, if the takeaway message is good government, surely one agency shouldn't rob another agency of a disservice it's delivering to its community. So it will shorten that lifespan. In the short term, we were progressing with constructing a facility to manage lead acid recycling waste. There's a large lead acid recycling facility in Wagga and that is one of the costs of TransGrid putting their transmission line through is it's stopped that project completely, it's not proceeding ahead at the moment and that waste now gets transported hundreds and hundreds of kilometres away.
Did Wagga City Council have some alternate proposals and did you put those to TransGrid? What was the response?
So the, TransGrid have two existing power lines through the facility already. So there's a 106 metre easement already in place. Through, right from the initial discussions, TransGrid brought up the proposition that there were other engineering solutions available. And no fewer through the consultation with it, we pressed them on that five times looking for responses to what those engineering solutions were. None were ever forthcoming and just issued it with compulsory acquisition, the overhead power line.
Is there any method by which Wagga City Council can oppose or attempt to stop the excising of that land, the waste facility?
Not that we're aware of. We believe once the agency has issued its compulsory acquisition power, exercised the compulsory acquisition power and that is acted upon with the gazettele of the acquisition, that's an end to how any easy option to challenge that. We have just filed our Land and Environment Court proceedings to actually review the way that compensation was determined. But we believe the doors are shut in terms of the exercise of that power.
And in relation to Snowy Valleys Council, we know that they've, TransGrid have proposed a number of routes. They've highlighted one route, then they've selected another route. Can you talk about how that consultation process has occurred? And has it resulted in less people being affected? Or has it just resulted in a different group of people being affected?
I will say there's been some wins for some people and probably a loss for the forestry because of them. But I will go back to what happened in the time before Covid and bushfires. Snowy Valleys Council was, we did ask when the Snowy 2.0 came to us, where are the power lines going to go? And we very quickly said they will get, the lines will get out of the national park as quickly as possible and then go down the ridges on un-arable land. And now you look today and so much of the land that you would have seen, the beautiful land, is arable, beautiful, prime farming land that they're putting these power lines on. And in the Cosiosco National Park, nine kilometres of land is going to be cleared to put in power lines.
Exactly the same. We did advocate as a council to, where possible, for the line to go through public land. So we pushed that pretty strongly.
Do you feel that the community's wants around this issue has been reflected in the proposals that TransGrid have put through? Or do you feel that it's been TransGrid's way or the highway, to coin a term?
I haven't been involved in any of the discussions with the landowners with TransGrid at the same time. But no, I think TransGrid have pushed it pretty hard. I would like to see if any compensation is paid, that it is to be paid, but I'd like to see it for the life of the project, not for 20 years.
And it seems to me that the undergrounding solution has been put forward at almost every juncture that there's been a community consultation process. Has TransGrid provided to you a reason as to why they are refusing to go down that path?
Cost.
Cost.
Out of doubt.
And have they?
Cost and shutdown.
Have they told you what that cost differential is?
We've had many different numbers given to us. I could not reliably tell you one.
Are you aware that if TransGrid has done any detailed work on the cost of undergrounding?
I know that Rebecca Togan, who will speak later, was on the committee for undergrounding and she probably would be the best one to speak on that.
Okay. I think my time is...
You've got 17 seconds.
17 seconds. Look, I think I've given it a pretty good crack. There's heaps more questions I can ask, but I'll put them on notice. Thank you very much for making your submissions and appearing today.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move to crossbench.
Thank you, thank you Chair, thanks for appearing today. So just wanted to, the situation with the waste management facility is really quite extraordinary. I just wanted to unpick that a little bit. So is it in operation now, just to be clear? Are you acquiring new land for the waste management facility? Or did this see the end of it functioning? Where are you at the moment with it?
Sorry, I apologise, my explanation wasn't very clear. The community of Wagga acquired the facility 30 years ago by compulsory process. There's been no further acquisition since that time. And the reason for that is they acquired sufficient area for many generations of waste management. Waste management is one of those activities where the processes themselves change quite frequently to divert waste so that you don't need land filling capacity and those activities are all pursued on this site. It would have had many generations left in it and it still has time left in it. This won't bring an end right now to that waste management activity. It just shortens the life at some time in the future and immediately sterilised the activities that were planned under that particular corridor that they're now about to construct. I don't believe, as General Manager of the council right now, that we would ever look for another piece of land to contaminate with a waste facility because the improvements in waste management are happening at such a pace that this facility, with the protections that the land use plan scheme wrapped around the site to ensure there were no conflicting uses nearby, would have been able to service the community for the long-term future. I do think that what TransGrid have done by their acquisition means that goal will no longer be attained and at some point in the future, the community and the region will be looking for another facility, probably a lot further away.
Yeah, okay, thank you, that's clear. So you spoke earlier about, and it's in your submission, about the compensation paid and that that's being challenged. Can I, am I, are you able to answer whether, in, quantify in terms of how much you're expecting? It could be a percentage wise, if you like, and how much you were given. Clearly, it was insufficient in your view.
I'm going to do this as quickly as I can because it's incredibly complex and I'll confess some of the nuances I don't follow myself. But in the compulsory acquisition legislation, there is a particular methodology for assessing compensation. It's quite specific, it is quite directed in what you can be compensated for. What we found was our challenge is that that legislation does not anticipate that a government agency or pseudo-government agency will actually acquire another agency's public service undertaking. And we found it very difficult to actually, and in fact failed ultimately, in getting that taken into account by the valuer general who ultimately determines the compensation amount. So to give you the actual numbers... So to give you the actual numbers fairly closely, um, the amount that we have been offered as compensation for a 1.8 kilometre long, 80 metre wide strip is 1.2 million dollars. The amount that we claimed in our compulsory acquisition, um, compensation claim was 58 million dollars. There's a big difference between those two numbers. The reason there's a big difference between those two numbers is we were trying to recover for the community, the cost that my community will ultimately pay in replacing and, so stopping the, um, the activity of the battery is one aspect of that, or the battery waste management facility is one aspect of that. But it's also the long-term relocation, obtaining approval, transport routes for further trucking, all the things that will follow from us needing to, um, pursue that. I will say that, um, in the proceedings that we've commenced in the Land and Environment Court, which I probably can't talk about too much, other than to say, other than to say that it's a much more positive, um, read that we are receiving from that than we did through the stock standard process. It's a procedural issue that's not catered for in the legislation.
Yeah, I'm, I'm well aware of, uh, most regional councils and Shire councils, uh, you wouldn't call them wealthy councils, uh, would you, uh, Mr. Thompson?
Um, because we have a limited income stream that's capped and we can't derive new income sources, um, other than through business undertakings, which are normally avoided by councils because of the risk attached to that, um, it's probably not wealthy and every dollar's accounted for.
Another question, I will, uh, come to Snowy Valley with some questions shortly. You also mentioned in your submission that, uh, you have requested a copy of TransGrid's application for ministerial approval. This kind of comes down to what was very heavily emphasised in your submission about the culture of decision-making, the way in which the decisions are being made. That hasn't been forthcoming, uh, but you've requested that. Why is that so important that you're able to have a look at that ministerial approval?
We're at another level of government. This isn't a decision that TransGrid makes on its own. At some point, um, it or its enabling agency approached a minister of the state government and asked for authorisation from the minister and the governor for approval to acquire a, an area of our waste, waste management facility. There is implicit in that, I believe, a need for full disclosure that they are about to acquire another government authority's, um, um, utility undertaking that it itself acquired through compulsory process. I suspect that's not in that letter. And if that's not in that letter, then I think that's an issue in itself in relation to how TransGrid is approaching compulsory acquisitions, not just for us. That's a testament to how they're approaching this all across the state and all the submissions which you'll hear later today and at the other hearings. If, if we see that letter and it doesn't make that full disclosure, it's be very hard for TransGrid to say that they're acting in good faith in relation to how they approach a minister for that final gateway approval to take someone's land against their wishes.
Would you like to, uh, see if the, uh, if, uh, the committee can, can obtain that ministerial approval? It has to be a committed decision, but I'm just putting it out there. If we, uh, can request it with that, um, would you, uh, like that to happen?
Yes.
We'll see. Sorry, Chair, that was, uh, to me. Risk to workers. So, uh, uh, TransGrid doesn't manage the risk now in terms of the waste management transfer facility workers. You've also highlighted that. Would you care to expand a bit?
That was one of the points that I made in trying to identify under each of your terms of reference why our submission was. And every, every day of every week, um, as a government authority, the risk of, of harm to the health and safety of workers is something that's front and centre, the highest priority. This is a workplace for not only my workers, but contractors, members of the public, members of the public. When you've got an alternative which is undergrounding power lines and not having these big power lines through the workplace, I don't understand a decision that actually chooses to go with overhead power lines and introduce an element of risk to what is a construction site for the want of a better term. And I, I thought that was something that was relevant for when you're looking at the efficacy of whether undergrounding power lines should be something that has a greater focus than it does now in the state. Another example, that's another example of where that would have avoided that risk completely. That's the goal in workplace safety management and yet it wasn't given any regard that I'm aware of at all.
I might come back to this if there's time, but I, I wanted to turn to, um, the issue of fires in the area. This morning, the committee, uh, spent, uh, the morning visiting landholders where quite a few of the community talked about their fear of, uh, the fires, how terrifying the last fires were and their fear of the massive transmission lines causing, uh, more fires. I'll go to you first, maybe councillor Chaffey, councillor Ham. If you could talk about what that was like and the real, the, the fear within the community about, uh, the potential for even greater, uh, fires and more intense fires as a result of these transmission lines? Is that what you're hearing in your community?
I might, I might.
Sure, thank you.
Look, I was the, I was the mayor during the Dunce Road fires. And we, we haven't recovered. These people haven't recovered. They're, they're living with trauma. But the narrative that we, we put following the, the bushfires was betterment. Everything that we did, we did better. Build it back better. Overhead lines, not better. Underground's the way to go. And I noticed Andrew Dyer said, "The risk of fire from modern above-ground transmission lines is virtually zero." It's a pretty brave statement.
And Kate, if I could just, um, say to that, because as someone, the, the fire started down my road and was very close impacted by it all. And then listening to the radio this morning, what's happening over in Greece and the post fires in Canada, um, it all comes back and you know exactly how those people are feeling and whatever. And then you're coming to here today and you're just going, guys, it, they have to go underground. Like everything we can possibly do to save us against natural disaster and what's about to happen, we have to do whatever the cost.
This, this transmission of power across the, the country in high voltage AC is not 330,000 volts, it's 500,000 volts. The chances of Corona effect, which is an arc from the, the line to the ground, is significantly increased. You can't fight fires under it while it's operating, right? But depending on the, the situation at the time, but smoke and, and those other types of debris cause a greater incidence of Corona. To me, as I said earlier, this, this is not an issue that we should be debating at all. Decision should have been made. We should be high voltage underground. We're looking at transmitting energy from Snowy 2.0, which effectively is the largest battery in this country, up the eastern coast and potentially across to Western Australia. Like there is talk about a high voltage transmission line to the west. Now, this, this shows a scant, and getting back to TransGrid, they're giving lip service to the process. They're not genuine. They've already made up their mind. They've changed the route, but that's to suit them, not to suit, necessarily suit the, the community. And they have no concept of, of, as I said, fire and its effect in this particular neck of the woods. If you were here in 1920, you would have known what fire was like. People, as James has said, there are people still traumatised by the fact. Have a look at Battler. They were told the town was indefensible and to get out, you know? Where I live in Tamraunpa, the fire came within 500 metres. Now, you know, I've lived through fire before, but some people just can't cope. And why do we need to subject our society to that when there is a solution?
Thank you. Can I, just, uh, on the, just sticking to it again, we heard on, uh, during the site visit, which, which won't be captured on Hansard, um, but if there's any, uh, experiences of the fire in relation to the existing transmission lines as well, I, uh, we heard, uh, one, uh, story of, uh, the arts. Yet, so if anybody, if any, I'll leave it open, uh, but if anybody, uh, has seen that or can tell that story now, uh, in terms of those transmission lines, I was the one who asked TransGrid two weeks ago about the fire risk and was gobsmacked at that response that, uh, you just read out. It would be good to capture, uh, something in response to that in terms of what you've witnessed or what the community has witnessed in terms of, uh, transmission lines, uh, potential, what they do in, uh, situations of, uh, extreme fire events.
I think the RFS is the people to talk to on that.
Okay.
The only other thing I could say to that, which I did witness is, um, someone's going to have to help me with the term, you know, the pyro.
Keemily Lu.
Pyroclastic.
Yeah. And, and I urge you to look into what that is, but it actually sort of like forms like a tornado effect. And that's how the poor young man Sam got killed down at, um, Gijjelik because it picked up a fire truck and did that. Now, if a power line was in the line there, it's gone.
Thank you. Getting to, uh, the whole, uh, issue that, uh, Snowy Valley, uh, council emphasised in your submission around tourism and the beauty of, uh, the area, uh, if you just wanted to expand on that, one of the issues of course that we're all grappling with, with is not grappling with, it's very stark, uh, is that, uh, all the other values aren't brought into any cost benefit, uh, analysis. The, the values of the tourism, values of the natural environment, uh, the values of, uh, the cost of extreme weather events in the future, but particularly tourism. Explain, uh, how much you think it will impact, uh, tourism in the area and land values? You emphasise that quite a lot in your submission.
Well, we're, we're trying to re, we're trying to build our tourism industry so that we've got a bit more diversity in our portfolio than just cows and sheep and pine trees. So we're trying to diversify that way. This area is the hub of where all the electricity is generated. So Snowy Valley's council generates 99% of all Snowy Hydro's hydroelectricity, just here. So it's all got to come out from here and it's all, basically all got to come back to pump the water up the hill. So is this just the start? Is this the thin edge of the wedge? Are we going to have more towers later on for when, when, you know, TransGrid 2.0, 3.0? So that's what we're really worried about. Yes, the tourism operators are, are concerned. And who would want to, to, to start up a new operation on somebody, something that might have towers all over it? So that's a, that's a major concern for us and a major concern for some of our.
And there have been properties suddenly going magically on the market, quite a lot of them because they know they want to sell before these towers get put on because their property values are going to plummet, no matter what the compensation is.
This is the first step, you know? We're, we're talking about one transmission route at present. There's a proposal for up to three. And to see a, a 90 metre tower every three to 400 metres across the landscape, carrying dual-circuit three-phase power is just going to destroy the environmental beauty of this neck of the woods and it's going to have a major impact on the viability of agricultural activities. So, you know, I, I just look at it and think, you know, if, if we're fed income about addressing the future, uh, electricity distribution, we have only one alternative. We can talk about ameliorating the issues and, you know, but the reality is we will need more and more energy into the future. We're talking about Snowy 2.0, we're talking about 3.0. There's an ongoing need for energy, particularly in the, uh, the, uh, renewable energy field because, you know, the sun doesn't shine all the time, the wind doesn't shine all the time. We need that backup source of energy. Where do you get it from? Well, water's one, batteries are another. Doesn't matter where you put the battery, but there's only a few places where you can go to get water.
Thank you. Well, thanks. We, we might move to government questions now.
Thanks, Chair, and thanks all the witnesses for coming. Um, I might start with the Wagga, Wagga City Council, uh, representatives and submission. Uh, Mr. Thompson, on page three of your submission, uh, towards the end of page three, you make, I think, a really eloquent point where you talk about entities with the most expertise in the power transmission field are the same entities who make the money from it and don't, in your view, have an interest in reducing public harm. Um, I wanted to ask you a few questions about that statement. Firstly, on that issue of expertise, um, have you found it, uh, from the perspective of council, um, a challenge in dealing with TransGrid in circumstances where they probably, I assume, have a higher degree of expertise in this area of power transmission?
Uh, the short answer to that question is yes. As I said at the beginning, um, in response to an earlier question, um, I couldn't complain about the, the way in which TransGrid engaged with us, but it was to a large degree, I believe, a, a charade. As my colleague has said, we asked them for different engineering solutions which would have avoided, uh, the acquisition or the overhead lines. They were not forthcoming. That doesn't mean we sit, didn't sit down in a room with engineers and specialists and I sat down in a room with engineers and specialists, but nothing came out of those meetings. And I would suggest, um, with a high level of confidence that the reason that nothing came out of those meetings is because when they look at their cost of operation and actually delivery of these transmission lines, if it's always going to be cheaper to put up overhead lines, no one in that organisation's getting a budget or a brief or a mandate or any other form of direction to look at better ways of transmitting power. And that's why I've made the comment that I did in the submission because it was one of the people that I believe is behind me or outside when we met on their veranda in the early days of this that pointed me to that Marabyn, um, study, that Marabyn Council and Victoria study. And it's just, the study itself is of interest, but the fact that another local government authority is spending its money to educate itself on power transmission where you've got all the expertise funded and sitting there in what I would have thought prior to this experience were public interest organisations. They're not operating in public interest. They're operating based on a cost assessment. What's the cheapest, cheapest method of delivery? And the impacts on local government, the impacts on communities are not entering that balance sheet. So there's no driver for them to use their, um, knowledge for good rather than use their knowledge for what we did 20 years ago.
So from your understanding of the community's interactions with TransGrid and their engagement, I suppose, in the consultation processes, would you make a similar observation about the capacity of the community to engage with these entities that have so much more expertise in what is a highly technical field?
I'm going to answer that two ways by saying my organisation has a budget in excess of 200 million dollars. I've got an extremely clever person sitting to my right, um, so I've got access to resources, that I would have thought, um, would have enabled us to engage with this better than people whose expertise is in husbandry and cropping and land management. One of the learnings for me in this experience though is that that, that's the wrong attitude. I think it's easier for me to equip myself with the knowledge, um, but the community, because of the threat that this is posing to them, um, have a great capacity to actually inform themselves on outcome. And I think if you're lining the three of us up, the community, local government and TransGrid, and who is investing the most intellectual effort into trying to find solutions, TransGrid would come third in that.
In your, uh, involvement in this issue, have you found that any, uh, existing regulator or agency that exists is able to play a more independent or objective role in relation to other communities interacting with, uh, TransGrid, for example?
I'm going to say no to that. I'm aware that there was, um, an individual brought in in the early stages to try and, um, re-establish communication with some of the groups. Um, I'm not sure whether I called an arbitrator or a mediator, um, but I had no direct experience with that. But that's the sort of intervention that's already happened and that's just the thin edge of the wedge. If, if this standing committee, um, is to truly, truly try and sink its teeth into finding solutions here, it needs to be with those third parties that don't have a vested financial interest in finding outcomes because that's not working.
So you're talking about, um, or you suggest that the committee should look at perhaps a legislative platform that overcomes the interest or lack of interest that particular agencies might have in, in avoiding certain public harms. Have you got any, any specific evidence you can give about what that might look like? About what factors or considerations would be mandated, uh, in such a legislative platform?
Well, can I take that question on notice? Because I'd love to answer it and I think if I answer it now, it won't be the best answer I can give you. Or I'd like to take mine.
Um, in terms of public harm and I suppose maybe the question of harm and cost in a way is the same question, um, are you able to talk about what are some of the harms or costs that in your opinion aren't being factored in by TransGrid when they give answers about cost?
I've deliberately used the word harm in my submission because I do not think that cost covers it. And I'll use an example, I can use our own example, but I've tried to articulate that in that submission. The landowners and the farmers and the primary producers that will walk through these doors today, TransGrid will say they can address the cost of the impact with dollars and cents, that doesn't address the harm. The harm is the impact on the horizon, the harm is the mental drain that it puts on people when they're seeing something completely out of their control and completely opposite to the lifestyle which they wish to live. The harm that it causes to their kids who may be one step further to going to Sydney rather than staying on the farm because the farm's a less attractive place. I could keep going for the amount of time this committee has on all the different forms of harm that cost does not redress. And to me, that's one of the issues that's being missed. And I welcome the standing committee's investigation into this issue because it's those sorts of things that need to be addressed.
Thanks.
We're all of the same opinion. You only have to look at the ways TransGrid has dealt with people who are still, as I said, early traumatised by the events that they've seen and the mere fact that they think money is the solution to all problems.
I might ask some questions now of the Snowy Mountains Council representatives. I want to ask some questions about the 2019 fires. And we spoke to some residents this morning who talked about efforts to fight those fires being impeded by existing transmission lines. And I was just wondering if you were able to speak to that issue at all? That's a question for any representative.
Look, the difficulty with the aircraft, fighting the fires with the aircraft, with visibility and the like, we also had difficulty getting enough water into the planes to get them up. That's being addressed now. But certainly, that's a question for the Rural Fire Service, you know, we've got knowledge of it, but we've got first hand knowledge of it, and the people on the ground underneath those towers would know. But it's not just, it's not just the large towers, it's all the lines crossing.
Yeah, having a husband and two sons fighting in those fires around power lines, you're just, you're aware of them, you can't, you've got to work around having them there, they restrict what you're doing.
And so many of those lines, just the timber ones burnt down, and so we had no power in towns and residents for a long time, I think, being said 11 days in Tumbarumba. When they replaced some of those power lines, they replaced some of them with composite and then some of them with timber. So, you know, it's either composite all the way or nothing really, but yeah, I didn't see the sense of replacing something that burned. As I said, I talked before about betterment, it's no better replacing something that's going to burn again.
One of the presentations we had by TransGrid regarding the power lines construction showed in the local community's mind a complete lack of understanding of what the impact of fighting fires under these power lines is. The mere fact that you can't get under them, right? You know, they won't switch them off during the situation. And look, you know, it's hard enough to fight fires in that sort of situation that we had there without these impediments, you know what I'm saying? And getting back to what James said regarding the use of aircraft to fight fires, when you've got these structures which you can't see in light of the smoke and the environment you're fighting in, that limits your ability to fight fires anyway. You know, the issue that we confronted in 2019 here was horrific. We lost 48,000 hectares of pine trees, all because we couldn't fight them. And some of those restraints revolved around the use or the presence of high voltage transmissions. And now they're contemplating infinitely higher voltages, which again make a greater restriction on your ability to fight fires.
There was a man this morning who we spoke to, it might have been this afternoon, who said that he had asked TransGrid, the operator of the existing line, to turn them off and on various, I think various occasions, that request had not been acceded to. And he was talking about, you know, it's obviously a difficult decision because if you switch off a big transmission line, you affect whole communities potentially and that can have a dire effect on people, even turning off air conditioning, you know, during summer might cause deaths, for example. So these seem like quite almost impossible decisions to make from a distance. Have you got any insight into operationally how those decisions are made?
It's very rare that they switch them off. They did tumour fires, I think, a few years earlier, so they have done it. But it's very rare.
But we were able to listen to the radio coverage while the fire was going on and you could hear people saying, can you turn the power lines off? Can you turn the power lines off? Because that meant whether they could go directly to fight the fire or whether they had to make their way around.
There was some pretty clear evidence, and I'm not suggesting that I accept it, but some pretty clear evidence in the last hearing from TransGrid that transmission wires or lines won't cause fires or won't be more likely to cause fires. But the evidence was less clear, I think it's fair to say, about how they impact on fighting fire. Have you got any insights, what's your collective experience about the first question? Do you accept that they won't cause more fires? Is your focus or concern more on the fighting fire issue?
Look, I think you're dead right, the fighting fire issue is a major issue. As to whether they cause fires, high voltage transmission at 330 volt KV doesn't present the same problem in causing corona effects as 500 KV does, right? There are transmission lines across the world that are 1000 KV, but they're substantial towers, we're talking of towers that are up to 90 metres high. So the chance of them actually causing the problem, you know, I'd say that reasonably you would think that the chance is not significantly effective at this point in time. As to what 500 KV does, I think the jury's out on that issue. But certainly, you know, the ability to turn power off during fires. And if you look at the cause of fires, basically it's on the lower voltage or lower voltage HV lines in our show, you know, 66 KV, 20 KV, 22 KV lines clashing, that sort of thing in climatic conditions. They basically are the ones that caused the fire. But the big problem is fighting a fire of the magnitude that we had here in the Dunce Road fire, you know, if you can't fight a fire at the appropriate time because you can't get under the power lines and, or as Julia said, you've got to go 10 kilometres to go 150 metres, it's a big problem. Fire's gone by the time you get there. And the way it travelled, you know, the fire, you would have the major fire here and for the next 10 kilometres you have spot fires.
The fire travelled from Dunce Road to Tumbarumba in a night, 80 kilometres in one night. And the next day the wind sort of turned 90 degrees and we had an 80 kilometre front coming at us. So it was very, very dangerous times.
Look, part of the problem is that this is the central hub. Power is interconnected down the eastern seaboard and into Victoria and South Australia through this neck of the woods. It goes from here through the Snowy Mountains scheme, comes out at Cairncavon and goes on to Victoria through Deterang and into Victoria and then eventually across to South Australia, although some does go through Wagga into South Australia or up through Broken Hill into South Australia. This is a focal point and now we're going to, instead of having two major lines out of here at present and one to Wagga, we're going to end up with potentially at least half a dozen of huge magnitude when there is an alternative.
And no mention of compensation for the community, compensation for the landowners.
The community doesn't get a goon.
Not for the community, not for the council, not for...
The tourism operators.
None of that. I believe there should be some sort of royalty or levy paid on these lines and the same for Snowy 2.0. I think there should be a royalty or levy there as well.
They're offering up to $20,000 a year for 20 years. And what are they going to do for the next 70 after that? These lines that we're looking at today, not the new ones, they've been up since the 60s. So, you know, if you're looking at the long term future of power distribution and the way it's going by virtue of clean energy, I don't know why we're having a discussion, to be quite honest.
Thank you. That's all we have time for unfortunately today, but thank you so much to you all for attending the hearing and for your submissions. Committee members may have additional questions for you after the hearing and the committee has resolved that the answers to these questions, along with any answers to questions that you might have taken on notice today, be returned within seven days. The secretariat will also contact you in relation to those questions.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the time. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Second hearing. Members in the public gallery could please start to take their seats. We'll get the second hearing underway. I'd now like to welcome our... I'd now like to welcome our next witnesses. Could each witness, starting from my left, please state their name and position title and swear either an oath, sorry, or affirmation?
Yes, I'm Kenneth Barber, and I'm representing myself, although I have my own consulting company. I solemnly and sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but truth.
My name is Les Brand. I'm the managing director of Amplitude Consultants. I solemnly, sincerely, and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
My name is Simon Bartlett. I'm an independent transmission expert, having spent my life there, and I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you. Would any of you like to start by making a short statement? Please keep to no more than a couple of minutes.
If I could, please. Madam Chair and committee members, thanks for inviting us to contribute to this inquiry from our 142 years collectively of experience in transmission. We aren't for or against overhead or underground, or HVDC or HVAC. We know all technologies are essential for Australia's successful transition to renewables. Their pros, cons, and opportunities must be weighed up based on facts, experience, not on ill-informed or biased views. We are, but all three of us are active members of SEGRAE, the world's leading technical institution for electric power systems, E-Power Systems, Ken Cables, Les HVDC. My background, I was the Australian Chair of Transmission at UQ and UTAS. I was a, at that time, I was the proponent for a 1,600-kilometre HVDC interconnection between Queensland and South Australia, instead of the current project Energy Connect. I was the COO of Powerlink for 17 years. In that time, built more thousands of kilometres of overhead lines and cables, four times that of TransGrid. I was the Director of Electronet for 12 years, including the Adelaide CBD Cable. I was awarded a Member of the Order of Australia for Services to Australia's Power Industry. My topic is power systems, the benefits of HVDC to integrate large amounts of renewables into the power system. Firstly, it's more efficient. In fact, it can carry two to three times the power that the same can be carried, same overhead line can carry. Most people don't realise that. Environmental: overhead lines, much lower visual impacts, no electromagnetic fields, easy, cheaply undergrounded through sensitive areas and agricultural land. Technical: no power system stability and voltage problems, and that can increase the capacity of the existing network. Economic: DC lines and cables are much cheaper than AC, but the converters from AC to DC are expensive. They're perfect for long distances, much better than 500 kV AC once you get over 400 to 600 kilometres. Long distance: low transmission losses, controllable, support weak power systems, restart blackout remote states. Network design: they're ideal for what's called the hub-and-spoke model, just like airways, roads, and telecoms. Hubs every 500 kilometres, connected by DC or 500, and then just use the conventional transmission, like spokes, within those hubs to go out to the renewable generation or the load centres. AEMO's 500 kV line weaving through five reses between Sydney and Melbourne, that's just like building a motorway going through the main street of every town you go through. It just simply will not work. Schedule: we have time, we must get this right, we only have one chance. HumLink was built for Snowy II, now seven years away at least. VNI West, that's eight years away. Project Energy Connect didn't need HumLink. It hardly started, it won't work. Southwest New South Wales Res, it's all solar PV. It's no use to keep the lights on in New South Wales because the peaks occur early morning, late evening. Snowy II doesn't even connect to HumLink. And anyway, if you want to get more power out of Snowy II, it can easily be done by enhancing the existing transmission. To me, a hasty decision is unnecessary and unwise. We must think this through. Thank you. I'll hand over to Ken.
Okay. Thanks very much, Simon. Chairman, committee members, good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to share my knowledge and experience. I have had 60 years in the power industry, in the supply and installation of overhead lines and underground cables. I was involved in the supply of the summer, the first, the first 500 kV transmission line in Australia in 1978, and into the introduction of low-loss alloy conductors into Queensland in the 80s. I was directly responsible for the supply and, in some cases, the installation of more than 2,000 kilometres of high-voltage cable, which was manufactured in Australia and supplied to New Zealand, China, Sri Lanka, and other countries in South East Asia. I was involved in the supply and installation of the world's first 220 kV XLP cable in Melbourne in 1990. I brought it with me, just to show you what the cable looks like. It was one of the first long-length AC cable links in 2000, in the world. And in 2010, I was responsible for the longest AC link in Australia, which is the link of 87 kilometres to the desalination plant in Wong Thang. I was the convener of a working group. Because of that, I was invited to be convener of a worldwide working group that published this document, which I understand was never mentioned by somebody from TransGrid the other day. This is the implementation of long-length AC high-voltage cable, and it essentially, it was published in 2017 and lists more than 80 circuits long length in the world, all over the world. We travelled all over the world and got people to talk to us. More recently, I was a member of the team that has completed the design for the 90 kilometres of DC link that's going to be built for the Mariner's project in Victoria. And the third thing is that I've lived in Victoria. I've had my own 450 hectare farm growing barley and wool. Hence, I have a reasonable understanding of farming, rural conservation needs, and in particular, the Department of Agriculture's integrity system requirements. I've been Deputy Chairman of SEGRAE and involved in technology for cables all over the world. I just would like to say that in my career of manufacturing, I've been involved in the technology of insulation materials required for DC cables, which are different from those from AC. And in the early days, all DC cables had to be made with oil-impregnated paper, Les will talk about one later. The former is heavy and expensive. But there are three types of insulation for DC. Two are chemically cross-linked, polythene, and now there's a new material which has come onto the market, which is not cross-linked. So DC cables are getting cheaper and cheaper all the time. In the planning of a high-voltage AC link, there are some important considerations, and I only have time to list a few. First of all, easements. Firstly, because of the greater capacity of DC, we only have very small trenches, and Les will talk more about that. Monitoring: these days, all high-voltage cables are fitted with optical fibres and monitoring. In fact, we did the first of these in a place called, in Sydney, in 1988, and now every cable has these monitoring systems with optical fibre. And TransGrid, as an expert on this, they have it on all their new 330 kV cables in Sydney, so you can tell real-time what's happening. Trees and vegetation: although Australian trees, native trees, are very shallow-rooted, we could put them over the top of our easements, but we don't like that. But even if you have trees by the side of the easement, they are no problem at all. But when we have areas of native grasses, I don't know whether you have kangaroo grass up here, but we do in Victoria, you just bore underneath it with a horizontal bore. If there's trees and creeks, you bore underneath it, so you don't have to disturb the environment whatsoever. And the third, which I think is very important, is GPS and RTK. I don't know whether you're familiar with this, but as a farmer, I started getting familiar. In recent years, with modern GPS systems for remote control of farming plant and the use of remote monitoring of our stock, we are going to need transmission link that will not affect these systems. Otherwise, we won't be an economic farming community in Australia. So, thank you. I believe I'm able to explain any other things that you might need to know about an environmentally safe transmission system.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, committee members, good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity for us to speak today. So briefly about my background, I have over 30 years' experience in the power industry. The last 24 years, almost exclusively in HVDC, long-distance cables and subsea cables. Some examples of my experience include Directlink, which is in northern New South Wales, and interestingly, Australia's first HVDC, and at one point was Australia's longest underground cable, 56 kilometres. Probably worthwhile noting Australia's role in the development of this technology. The kind of technology we would talk about using today, Directlink was one of the first in the world to be developed. Shortly after, I took the role as Project Manager/Operations Manager at Murraylink. Again, same technology, 180 kilometres, and for 15 years held the record of the longest underground cable in the world. Since then, major roles on long-distance projects, Baseline Transbay Cable in the US, and most recently doing a number of AC versus DC, underground versus overhead studies, which includes cost estimates and pros and cons, et cetera. So just a few technical points that I'd like to make. Despite Australia being an early adopter of HVDC technology for long distance, the mainland transmission companies have not adopted this technology in the two decades since. Murraylink held the record for the longest underground cable, as I mentioned. It won a CASE Earth Award in 2002. We managed to install 180 kilometres in a four-metre-wide construction corridor. Meanwhile, HVDC has been embraced internationally as essential for integrating large amounts of renewable energy, particularly for long distances. Some of the reasons why they do this, the relatively low cost per kilometre means that at certain distances, HVDC systems can become more economical. When you compare HVDC underground with AC overhead transmission, the HVDC underground option can be as low as two to three times the cost, not more than 10, as I've often heard recently. Similarly, at certain distances, the electrical losses are lower for HVDC, and this is an important point to make, than for an AC overhead or underground system. The planning concepts for an integrated AC/DC power system must take into account the fact that when you decide to use DC, you are not using DC as, in the same way as you're using AC. So the planning concepts need to be different. And, you know, as has been mentioned a few times previously, HVDC is best used for shunting large amounts of renewable power to a location of a large amount of load. What happens to the AC network? Yes, it's expensive to T in and T out in the DC line, but what happens to the AC network is you relieve congestion in the existing AC network. So if there are smaller renewable energy developments that need to connect, it makes it easier for them to connect to the existing AC network. The analogy I use is a highway bypass, which bypasses a town. You want to shun all that traffic away from the town whilst actually relieving congestion on the roads within the town, and that's a good way of thinking about it. Countries like Germany have adopted this concept, making underground cables for long-distance transmission mandatory since late 2015. And, so, projects include Sued Link in 4 gigawatts, 750 kilometres, Sued Auslink, 2 gigawatts, 270 kilometres, and then the Sued Green project, which hasn't been mentioned, or I don't think it's been mentioned, 2 gigawatts, 563 kilometres in the US.
Well, sorry, Mr. Brown, we'll need to move to questions shortly, very shortly.
Yeah, that's the end of my intro.
Thank you. We'll now move to the opposition for questions.
Thank you. How much time have I got, just out of curiosity?
Just working it out.
No worries. I'll start my questions while I'm waiting for time. Obviously, I've got a short amount of time, so...
10 minutes.
10 minutes, thank you. First thing I want to ask is, gentlemen, thank you very much for appearing. Have you had the chance to review the transcript of the previous hearing, and in particular from TransGrid? Now, they made a number of claims, but they did specify that they weren't experts. Now, clearly, you've put your bona fides on the table, and I think we're happy to accept those, in relation to some of the points that TransGrid made. I think the big one's costs first. They've specified somewhere between 3 and 10 times. Can you provide some details to what you think the DC undergrounding would cost for HumLink, for example?
We, so, I've read the GHD report in quite a lot of detail. Collectively, we're of the view that the cost per kilometre that they've mentioned is significantly high. Our own estimates, based on, as I've mentioned, we've been doing a lot of cost estimation, AC versus DC, we believe that cost per kilometre is somewhere between 60 to 70 per cent of that number.
So in relation to that, we heard from the CEO of TransGrid last hearing that he's expecting that $3.3 billion that's allocated for HumLink will increase by about 30, 40 per cent, somewhere around the region of $5 billion. Now, the GHD report, I believe, had the undergrounding costing at around $11.5 billion, and you're saying it's somewhere around 60 per cent of that. Would that be accurate? So we're talking somewhere about around $7, $8 billion? Would that be your estimate?
What I mentioned was the cost per kilometre for the cable. There's still the cost of the converter stations and all the other costs that go around it. So our estimates come to about 80 per cent of it.
Okay, so in that perspective, then, we're somewhere in the region of about double what HumLink would be for an overhead system. We know that there's been some commentary from the federal government that if it's around the double the price, that it's something that should certainly be looked at, given the benefits that the system would provide, i.e. more amenity, less visual pollution, safety from things like fire and all those other issues that relate to overhead. Do you believe that we can achieve a price that is around that double mark? And if so, why hasn't TransGrid done the work, the costing work, on this solution?
Good question. Thank you.
I thought it was.
I, well, I think that's the thing that's staggered us. I've worked for some time on the Mariner's project. I started with Hydro Tasmania, I looked at Roots, I worked with a very detailed team of international experts. We called in people from Norway and people who've done this. In fact, the leader of the group was a guy in Australia who built the interconnection that you know of in Denmark, you know, and undergrounding. So he was very familiar with it, and he led our team. I worked with a very prominent pipeline-laying contractor, because most of the jobs I've done have been down roads. I had not much experience of going through private property. This person had pipelines through. So together, we worked, and we worked with the community. We asked the landowners, what if I put, and where shall I put it here? And he said, oh, you can't have it there because I want to subdivide the land and various... By working with the community, you can come up and you can get the community on your side. Any project I've done, the first thing I do is go out and talk to the people. I'm digging up in front of their houses. I'm going to put it there. What do you want? Oh, I want to be able to get in and out of my drive. All of these things we did on the Mariner's project.
So, given that I've only got a very short amount of time, I'm just going to keep rolling through with the questions.
I was going to say something.
Please, yes.
There's disadvantages with the AC that's being proposed. It's all being carried on a single tower, and we know in the industry, you can have severe lightning, you can have bushfires, catastrophic winds, severe flooding, even sabotage, that has happened, which can take that whole tower out, the whole line. And that would mean, if it does it when it's carrying full load, you'd have a blackout of New South Wales. So it's not secure, certainly not secure as underground.
So do you think that the estimates that they've given, which ranged from three times to 10 times, which I've made the point earlier, is it's a massive variance? I mean, like, it's like to have something just 300 times to 1,000 times different, like, how you've not been able to narrow that down, I don't understand. But those are wildly inaccurate. Would that be a fair assumption?
I think their 10 times is based on undergrounding AC transmission.
Right.
Undergrounding DC and paying for the converters is only going to be two to three times the cost.
So when we asked some questions around the advantages of the AC system, which is the overhead system, one of the responses from the regulator and from the ombudsman was that the AC system would allow future further renewable energy projects to be tapped into them. Can you provide some insights to what that might mean for the community and what the feasibility of that is?
Firstly, the 500 kV or HVDC is to transmit large amounts of power at long distances, typically 400 to 500 kilometres. You don't tap into either of those systems to allow someone to hop on along the way. It's much better, because the cost of an AC substation is more like $300 million, based on the pricing they've got, not $100 million for VNI. Much better to use the 330 kV network as a distributing system, take it a couple of hundred kilometres either way, hop on there. It's like building a major freeway. You have ramps for getting on and off at long distances apart. You don't keep stopping and weaving through towns because you congest the interconnection and you congest the local network. This concept is just wrong.
So the idea that there was some business case behind the idea that we have an AC system so that we can tap in and out of it for the 500 kVA transmission would be theoretically less feasible?
That concept is flawed.
It's flawed, okay. So in that perspective, then, what are the benefits that you would see playing devil's advocate here of having a overhead 500 kVA system? Is it purely cost?
Well, it's getting to the stage because of the way DC costs come down. If you're wanting to build a 400 megawatt, major, 400-kilometre major highway, you're better to use DC.
So in that instance...
I think the role for 500 AC is almost getting past us. We're better to use the 330 kV for distributing systems than have the major links. And DC worldwide now is the favoured technology for that, for all sorts of reasons.
Sorry, Mr. Brand.
Sorry, do you mind if I add something?
No, no, please.
When we size a HVDC link to get bulk power from one point to the other, we would, you would rate the HVDC link for the amount of power that you expect to inject at the converter, right? So there's just no capacity in there to be, to want to even, you know, loop in, loop out, or tie and tie. And we're actually working on a project in Africa where, you know, they're pretty much, they understand this concept, and there's, they're upgrading the existing AC network to loop in and loop out and then shunting the power, this is from a new hydro, shunting the power directly to wherever it needs to go.
I'd like to add one other thing.
Yes.
It's not necessary to underground the whole length of HumLink. It can be built, some of it can be built overhead if the environment is compatible with that. An overhead HVDC, far more compact, far less visual impacts, no electromagnetic fields. If it's underground, well, you have to underground.
That was actually one of the questions I was going to ask, so I'm glad that you addressed that. Thank you, it sort of saves me some time. In relation to some of the other information that TransGrid provided around the disadvantages of undergrounding DC, can you talk about the channel widths that they would have to dig, the easements that would be provided, the ability to reuse the soil, and the actual, I guess, impacts of the undergrounding on landholders? Those were some of the things that they raised as disadvantages. Mr. Brand?
So I'll start, I'll start with the trench width. So TransGrid's own report actually refers to two trenches at 2.1 metre wide for the full underground HVDC option. We've reviewed that, we basically agree with that concept, 2.1 metres, sounds reasonable. Depth at about 1.2 metres, okay? The, there has to be a gap between the two trenches because you don't want the heat of one cable influencing the other, and again, that report refers to that being three metres. Anything you do after that is more about how much space do you need for construction? So even if you assume five metres, 2.1, 2.1, then five metres either side, you're still sitting at less than 20 metres for the construction corridor, and then two lots of 2.1 metres during operation. And if you, and with cables, you can, you can do things like we did on Murraylink and Directlink. You can use road reserves, you can use old rail reserves, you can use firebreak areas, and one, one thing you can do when you have two trenches, you put one trench on one side of the road and one trench on the other. You can do these kind of things, sorry.
Yes, that's exactly what we're doing in Mariner's. We're putting one trench, only one, 1.2 metres wide, because the power requirement on Mariner's is that we can't have much more than 750 megawatts falling out of the system because it wouldn't balance the energy supply in Victoria. So there's one circuit with 750, a little track, another circuit with 750. That's all in 15 metres. We've left a bit of space beside to put another 1,200 megawatt circuit if we want to go up So in 20 metres, you've got a capacity to put at least three circuits.
Thank you. We'll move to opposition questions, sorry, crossbench questions now.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you all for appearing today. So it appears by the evidence that you have provided in your submissions, the very expert evidence and the evidence that you've just provided today, that it directly contradicts much of what TransGrid provided in their evidence to this hearing a couple of weeks ago regarding underground transmission lines. So they say it's outrageously expensive. You're saying that it's getting cheaper and cheaper. They say it will require digging 50 metre wide trenches. You've just contradicted, you've just corrected that today and said several metres wide. They say that it will sterilise the land above it. You say that it can be used for agricultural purposes. They say that transmission lines aren't suitable to be built up, to be built in, built up areas. And you say that they are in place in other parts of the world and this is standard practice internationally. Why is TransGrid spreading all of this misinformation about underground transmissions? What is your experience with TransGrid on underground transmission lines and why are they doing this?
Well, they've just installed some of the biggest underground transmission in New South Wales, the 330 KV cable going out to the New Airport. So they have people in their department who know all about underground cable. They've put in monitoring systems which are world class, real time monitoring temperature. They're leading the world in terms of their underground people. So I am staggered, frankly, why there is one group of people saying one thing. If I talk to my colleagues who are engineers at TransGrid, I consider them to be, have some of the best expertise in the world. They go to the same conferences we go to, CIGRA conferences, they know all this information.
Professor Bartlett, thank you.
I'll say a couple of things. TransGrid seem to be of the view that this is urgent. Humelink must be built urgently by 2026, I think, for a variety of reasons. I don't really agree with any of those reasons. They've also awarded the contracts for buying the equipment for the construction and to turn around and do something different now when it's urgent probably doesn't make sense to them. They probably believe what they're doing is the right thing, they think it's urgent, they've awarded the contracts and to change to a different solution now would, well, it would be very costly for them. And it could be that that is why they have a different view to us on some of these issues.
Can I jump in? So in terms of the cost, because in questions at the hearing, it was revealed that Humelink is now potentially costing more like $5 billion. So does the latest cost increase constitute a material change in circumstance and hence require the regulatory investment test process to be reviewed in your opinion?
Well, TransGrid will argue that to be a material change in circumstances, like to you and I, the cost has gone from about a billion to $5 billion, that's clearly a material change in circumstances. However, under the regulatory test, there's this fine print at the bottom that says it's only if it then isn't the best solution in accordance with the way the regulatory test is undertaken. And I know the regulatory test, I know the flaws in it and it's quite likely that if they repeated it, it will still come out as the cheapest solution. So I really think there needs to be a good, solid look at the regulatory test and that whole planning process because it's not, to me, it's not achieving the best outcomes for this country.
And if Humelink is still built at net cost, as it's reasonable, we know that the electricity consumers have to pick up the bill, basically, shouldn't the new generators, especially Snowy 2.0, but they should be paying their fair share as well? We need regulatory change here as well, don't we?
The question of who pays has been boiling around in the regulatory arena for a long I personally think that Snowy 2 will probably never be completed because of the problems with the Snowy 2 site from the start. And even if they did have to pick up the tab, their government owns, so the cost is going to come back to the taxpayer in any case. So whether it's the taxpayer or whether it's the electricity consumer, we really have the same situation. We're building something which is already blowing out to $5 billion. Is it the best solution for Australia? Are there other options?
Can I, and I have so many questions for all of you, so expect a few on notice because I'm not going to get through them all. But Professor Bartlett, again, your submission highlights the community opposition to overhead transmission lines in New South Wales and Victoria has already added a significant cost to Humelink. You said it's potentially $4 billion worth. So essentially, because of the community opposition, because of this last century thinking, potentially $4 billion has been added to the cost of all of the transmission lines in total.
That's correct.
From Victoria to New South Wales, that's extraordinary.
The original proposal for VNI was to run it alongside the existing VNI from Murray River, is it, down to Melbourne. If you look at the distance, that would have been about, Sydney to Melbourne would have been about 800 kilometres. Because of community opposition to VNI in particular, it's been pushed further and further and further westwards. The length now is 1,300 kilometres. That's an extra 500 kilometres. At the price that they thought Humelink was going to cost, that's about $8 million per kilometre, 500 times eight is $4 billion. At the price we're now hearing it's going to cost, it's more like $7 billion for that extra length. And the other problem is electricity doesn't always goes, it's like water, it goes the shortest route. If you push one line out here and make it so much longer, electricity won't want to go that way. It'll want to go down the existing VNI. It's got to the stage where it's been pushed so far west, it really is pointless even building it, I think.
Okay, transmission losses. I think Les, you talked about transmission losses in your submission. Could you please explain? You talked about, I think, the comparison with underground, with AC, sorry, versus HVDC and what that means. Does that also imply greater cost ultimately to the consumer in terms of more energy being produced in terms of those transmission losses?
Yeah, that's correct. And, you know, the national electricity market has an overall, has a number of overall objectives and one of them is to minimise loss. So HVDC converters, like the AC substations in the AC transmission have, do have relatively low losses in the substation. The converter stations, if you look at the old technology, older technologies, they used to be 4%, 5%. These days they're sitting at around 0.8% to 1%, which is actually getting closer to an AC substation with improvements in technology. But on the DC side, for the same amount of power, the amount of loss, electrical loss is significantly lower. So the longer the cable, the longer the transmission line, the greater the discrepancy between electrical losses.
Thank you. So was your example the line in Victoria, which, the Murraboo line?
Yes.
That's you? Yeah. So three times as much is lost via AC lines than underground line? There was a study that, that found that?
That's correct and that's what we came up with.
So ultimately, more energy has to be produced in an era where we're trying to save as much energy as possible, obviously, and everybody's concerned about rising electricity prices.
Yes.
We've got a solution on the table that TransGrid is obsessed with and not looking at anything else that is going to give higher, result in higher electricity prices potentially. Is that situat, is that...
That's...
So TransGrid's going for Humelink, not looking at underground. Do you think that that, that will have implications for electricity prices?
To properly assess it, you have to work out the lifetime cost of both projects, which means capital cost and the cost of losses along the life. And I am confident that when you calculate the HVDC equivalent, you'll find the annual cost of losses will be a lot lower.
Perhaps I can explain technically what it is.
Yes, please.
A conductor, whether it's in a cable or up in the air, is a circular piece of aluminium or copper. The electricity has to flow down it. If AC flows down it, electromagnetic fields push all the current out to the outer perimeter of the conductor. So all, all that current is going through this little skin on the outside. So it gets a lot hotter, it gets a lot more losses. With DC, it just spreads right across the whole conductor. So that's why DC must have lower losses than AC.
But did one follow up to that because of what TransGrid said? Just about the, just about the, okay.
TransGrid's...
Yeah.
Put it on notice.
Yeah. We'll just move to government questions now. Thank you.
Mr Brand, you say on page six of your submission that you've discovered that in the UK, for example, they apply triple bottom line analysis.
Correct.
Are they taking into account both financial, social and environmental factors? If I could refer you to some evidence that Mr Redman of TransGrid gave at the previous hearing, he said categorically that in his view, the regulator would not have approved undergrounding. And I want to ask firstly of each of you if you agree that the regulator would not have approved undergrounding.
With the regulatory process, I would agree with that. Mr Bartlett, do you agree with that?
I think there's a lot of other benefits from undergrounding or using DC than just carrying power from A to B. And if those benefits are properly costed and factored in, it could well be that an additional times two multiplier is justified. And as I said before, you don't need to underground this line, the whole route. You can go above ground and above ground DC transmission is much cheaper, much more aesthetically pleasing, I can say that, than an AC line. I've got photos here if you're interested in seeing some comparisons. So it may not even be a times two if a large part of the DC connection is overhead, overhead DC. So I'm not convinced that you couldn't get this through, wouldn't pass the regulatory test if it is done fairly.
Okay, thank you. Mr Bartlett, do you have any views on that?
I can't really say anything except that I think our Australian regulatory rules are wrong because they don't take into account, things we heard earlier today, of the environment, what we, what the cost of these is in an environment. In the modern society, there's a totally different view. And you've only got to go to France and Germany and all these people I talked to in Europe and the people there understand that you have to pay for what you get. And we haven't got it in the AAR. If it's just dollar for dollar, yes, overhead lines are cheaper. But are they what we want? And if it's going to cost us, if we're not going to be able to fight our bushfires and we can wipe out $2 billion worth of trees, then I don't think, and that hasn't been addressed in the AAR. And therefore I am very, I cannot see why, if the cost is higher, the AAI should oppose it because it would be in the interests of Australia to...
As I pointed out, we were talking about the UK and their practices. The UK has a regulator, a very good regulator, a very good regulatory model. They are convinced, they, well, they've been able to convince the regulator to put DC cables in. And offshore, they have what are called bootstraps, they have DC cables running east and west of the UK, from north to south, to bring the power from the north down to the south. So they've been able to justify through their regulatory environment, not just putting it in cables, but putting it out in the ocean. You know, it's a small country, a lot of people, so there's a lot of adverse things to putting it overhead through those communities.
Mr Brand? Just one more point on that. The, Professor Bartlett mentioned the technical benefits that are not being taken into account, something I'm noticing with a lot of the European HVDC links that are being approved. One benefit is HVDC is fully controllable, like it's like a tap. So if you wanted to ramp up quickly, if you wanted to ramp down quickly, you can do that. You can't do that with AC transmission. Transmission, it's like having a pipe with water on one side, like that, right? So, so what they're finding is the, one of the benefits, especially in this environment where networks are becoming a little bit difficult to manage, the ability to be able to actually ramp up a HVDC link quickly or ramp it back, or in the case of some of the HVDC links in Europe suddenly reverse, they're actually managing to save the transmission network from a potential voltage collapse or a blackout simply by being able to do that. And the environment at the moment, the regulatory environment at the moment does not allow us to, to capture that kind of benefit.
To summarise some evidence that was given last week, it was said that there would be a five to six year delay on Humelink if it was, I think, entirely undergrounded. And more importantly, for the purpose of this question, that it would cause pressure on the grid and potential power failures and so forth because of both the need to shut down existing coal-fired power stations, but also if they continue to operate after a certain time period, that they won't operate to peak capacity. And I'm wondering if you've got any comment, all three of you, on that evidence particularly?
What we're seeing in Australia is we're having a lot of solar power coming onto the system. And it causes, I don't know if you've heard of this term, the duck curve. It causes the residual demand that we have to supply in the daytime to be sort of scalloped out. But in the morning, before the sun's come up, it has enough intensity in it. And in the evening, when everyone's quickening the tea, you get these massive peak demands. Those are the demands which are going to be a lights-out situation. We need to have enough capacity to supply those peak demands. Now, you think about it. It's been said, we've got to build, originally we were building Humelink to connect in Snowy 2. Snowy 2 is now deferred until the end of 2029. I think it'll be later than that, but that's eight years from now. So you've got eight years before you need Humelink to connect in Snowy 2 or even then. Then we've heard, oh, we need it anyway, we need it anyway because of all this solar plant out in the north west of New South Wales. We need that to keep the lights on. But it doesn't run over the morning peaks and the evening peaks. It's going to be, it will not help to keep the lights on. Or they're saying, we need it because the existing Snowy can't get all its power down to Sydney. But Humelink doesn't connect to the existing Snowy. It connects to Snowy 2, there's one very weak link. Like it's much easier to get more power out of those existing transmission lines. If they're only carrying the power in the morning and evening peaks, it's a lot cooler. So they have a higher rating. Now, TransGrid doesn't differentiate in their rating between time of day, I believe, they're just using one figure. But I believe all of these reasons that you're being given to compel you to make a hasty decision because the lights are going to go out are not valid.
Okay. Okay, thank you. There's been some evidence to the effect that there's already been an award of contracts for construction of above-ground power lines for Humelink. Are you able to comment on the financial cost of cancelling those? Like what are we talking about here in terms of unscrambling the egg, if I can put it that way?
Well, I would have, I don't know what the contract says, but usually when you have to compensate someone for terminating, terminating a contract, you have to pay them for all of the expense they've incurred to date. And then you may have to pay them something for loss of profit for what they haven't spent. Well, if the contract has only been let recently, there's almost nothing in terms of what they've spent. It's then a question of how they perceive going for being compensated for what's not been spent versus being part of what really needs to be built. I don't know the ins and outs of what's in that contract, I don't know the ins and outs of what the contractor may think, but I certainly don't think you're going to have to pay them the $5 billion.
So, sorry, I can't comment directly on that question, it's not my area. But I do want to say something about schedule and that is, I firmly believe that if you fairly assess underground options early enough in the process, that a HVDC underground option would be installed quicker than an AC overhead transmission option. And if it had have been done in the case of Humelink, we'd probably, probably be under construction right now. right now. The, you know, there's been some discussion, I've heard some discussion today about the next one and the next one. And we really have to think about having a process that fairly assesses underground cables, not just taking, you know, grabbing some examples from a 330 KV line in CBD and then multiplying it by the number of hundreds of kilometres. You've actually got to use people who understand the technology, who actually understand that when you build a long-distance transmission cable project, you innovate and there's a lot of economy of scale involved in building, you know, hundreds of kilometres of cable compared to a small amount.
I wanted to add one thing. Germany is now converting an existing high-voltage AC line, 380 KV. The project is called UltraNet, and there's been mention of it in some of your submissions, to DC. So, what they've concluded, it's very difficult in Germany to get additional right-of-ways, it's even difficult for them to put in underground cables. They've investigated and they're now building, and it'll be commissioned next year. Leaving the towers, kick the towers, kick the wires, just change the insulators, support the wires, build some terminal stations, AC to DC, and you've got a DC interconnection. Theirs is 330 kilometres, it carries 2,000 megawatts. That's a fair bit of power. Maybe it's possible to do the same thing in Australia. Maybe, I know the existing lines are old, there may be some problems with the conductors, but it could work as a stop-gap measure until you build the cable and then switch over. I don't know, but to me, this hasn't been looked at as an option. If you could do that, you could actually, just with the terminal stations, have that whole link from Sydney to Snowy to Melbourne, rather than doing the 1,300 kilometres. But someone's got to look at that, you know, with an open mind and, you know, look at the quality and the standard and the condition of those lines, and could they be capable of doing that? What are the logistics of actually doing it? So, I'm not sort of putting it up as a silver bullet, there's never a silver bullet, but it hasn't been looked at.
Thank you. Thank you all for attending this hearing today. Committee members may have additional questions for you after the hearing. The committee has resolved that the answers to these, along with any answers to questions taken on notice today, are to be returned within seven days. The secretariat will contact you in relation to these questions. We will now take a very short break of probably five minutes before we start the public forum. I apologise, we're running a bit behind schedule today. Thank you all.
If people could please start to take their seats again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Wes.
I don't know where it is, mate. But I just kept going towards the top. Of the coke, you meant? Yeah, yeah. Oh, you tried my coke?
Yeah, yeah. All right. Okay, welcome to today's public forum for the Standing Committee on the Feasibility of Undergrounding the Transmission Infrastructure for Renewable Energy Projects in New South Wales. This session is an opportunity to hear directly from the people of this community and their views on transmission infrastructure. Before we commence, I would like to make some brief comments about the procedures for today's public forum. Speakers were asked to register in advance today's forum. Those of you who registered as yes have been registered to speak will be called upon to the table in turn. I'll call you up, I'm sorry, I'll call you up four at a time, just to enable somewhat of efficiency. You will all have approximately three minutes to speak to the committee and we will sound a warning bell at the one-minute mark so you are aware that you will need to conclude your comments. What you say today is being transcribed and streamed live to the Parliament's website and will be included as evidence to the inquiry. It is also important that I note again that while all participants are covered by parliamentary privilege, committee hearings and public forums are not intended to provide a forum for people to make adverse reflections about others under the protection of privilege. In that regard, it is important that participants focus on the issues raised by the inquiry in terms of reference and avoid naming individuals unnecessarily. Finally, I sincerely thank those of you who came today to speak to the committee. It is important that the committee hears from the people that transmission infrastructure for renewable energy projects will have a direct impact on. It will help to shape our report and formulate what we hope are important recommendations to the government. If time allows, at the end of the public forum, we have a list of people that have registered as maybe to speak. If there are any others which to speak after that time, we will open up and allow you to do so. I now welcome our first forum participants. And this is just alphabetised. Peter Brunskill, Philip Clements, Brad Dumbrell and Russell Irwin. If you could come forward to the microphones, please.
Right. Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Committee, for coming along today. My name is Peter Brunskill. I run a sheep farm at Bookham. I'm currently hosting three separate large power lines on my property, so I have the O3 line, the 990 line and the Barrenjack line currently running through my property. I welcome the transition to renewables, but I hope we can adopt the best methods for transmission. Undergrounding is fast becoming world's best practice for all new transmission projects and repurposing of overhead lines. Long-term cost benefits completely outweigh old overhead technology. There are existing and current projects that are successfully showcasing the merits of undergrounding. Given the extensive delays of Snowy 2.0 until early 2030 at least, now is the time to have a full and thorough investigation into what is a long-term project. And I'm sure I speak on the majority of affected landholders and affected neighbours, that we would encourage and we would provide assistance in bringing the project to a speedy fruition if undergrounding was adopted. This would result in less impact on the environment and our working space and no impact on our ability to cope with the danger of serious bushfires. I'm sure you're aware of the facts and figures around these issues and I thank you for coming here today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Committee. My name's Phil Clements. I'm the executive officer for the Softwoods Working Group, representative of the plantation industry around the South West slopes of New South Wales. I agree with everything Peter said to start with, so I'll just try and add a little bit to that as well. From the plantation's perspective, the proposals are looking at taking out, I guess, in some respects a relatively small area but still a very significant volume, especially hot on the heels of the last wildfire losses that we had in 2019 and 20. We do run the real risk of hitting a tipping point for industry if we keep removing resource. And in addition to the plantation losses, which were around about $80 million worth of pulp, paper and timber products from just that small easement that could go through the supposed root refinement that we're looking at through Bago and Greenhill State Forest, there is also an area of about 350 hectares of native forest that is also going to be cleared and we end up with a rather ironic situation where a renewable energy project can only be enabled by facilitating deforestation of native forest. So, bit weird there. Peter's mentioned all the advantages because of the firefighting and fire prevention issues by going underground. From our point of view, being underground would pretty much eliminate all the issues that we've got with those overhead transmission lines. Our report, we also identified a few of the so-called pub test questions because we're not technical experts in any of this sort of stuff, but there's things that just don't make sense, such as what's happening in other countries. We note that power lines are installed between countries and often kilometres deep under oceans. We've heard about the Miracle Council's undergrounding proposal for 190-kilometre route has been considered viable. We don't see that there's a total cost of ownership approach being taken to assessing the overall costs of this particular project, just it's only looking at the construction costs. And we're also concerned that there's, with the ever-increasing calls for electrification, that there's going to be even further transmission facilities required over the next decade or beyond. I also hear the Prime Minister and the Energy Minister talk about us being a global leader in new technology for renewables and we support that 100%, but then why can't we also be a global leader in not only the generation capacity but also the transmission capacity as well? And that would undoubtedly take it underground. So, in summary, we believe the undergrounding options will produce an outcome that is innovative, smarter, lower maintenance, safer, lower or no risk from a fire management perspective, better for the environment, preserves the productive capacity of the land that it's crossing, both from an agricultural, horticultural, forestry and timber perspective, and will be embraced, accepted and supported by the community generally.
Okay. Thank you very much for everyone. I'm an electrician, I'm not used to these sort of things, but listening to the experts earlier and everyone, it was really interesting and quite forward. So, I'm coming from two points of view.
Sorry, what was your name?
Brad, Brad Dumbrell.
Thanks, Brad.
So, first off, that view, the picture in the background, is the view from my wife's place. So, to start off with, it was going to go straight across over our head, right? So, we understand the effect of what an 80-metre tower across the top of our, across that beautiful valley would be. We've been fighting it for three years. The next route was out to Gubregander, which wasn't in our view or anything to do with us, but we understand the effect on people, that most people in these communities don't because they don't understand what it will do to this beautiful valley. I've travelled all around the country and I've travelled overseas and this is one of the most beautiful valleys there is. I have a million-dollar view, I don't want to live down the coast, I don't want to live anywhere else, this is where I want to live. My wife, we've been given a property of her family and we have just a little 20 acres of that view. I have four young boys and I want them to be able to live there for the rest of life if they want to and have that there. So, now it's going across, I've marked on that where the power lines are going to go and it's taking up most of our view. And what most people don't understand is, people in Tumit, they build up on a hill, they spend the extra money, they do all that because it's a beautiful valley. And you asked about tourism before. If that view is destroyed by power lines, what is the tourism? Why would you come here? You know, you've got everything else there. That whole view now is going to diminish my value of our place, not that we ever want to sell it, but if we have to, it's going to diminish the value of that place. We don't get any compensation and most people in this beautiful valley don't because they don't know about it unless it's on their property and they might get some compensation for how long and I don't think that's enough. If we put it underground, we don't destroy that beautiful valley, we don't destroy any of the valleys. We don't, like, the anguish and the frustration we put on all these people looking at that view, how do you put a price on that? And that's all I want to say because I don't want to take up everyone's time, but I want to come from that side of things because not many people talk about that effect, you know? Because it could be a million-dollar place and it could drop by $200,000 by just those power lines being on the other side. And we're that far away, so, yeah, that's all I want to say. And thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Okay.
I just wanted to check, Russell Irwin wasn't here? Called him previously, no. I'll call the next four in that case.
Good apology.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Louise, Suzanne Freckleton, Anne Hallard, Barney Hymes and Bill Kingwell.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Committee and Support Team, which is extensive. My name's Louise Freckleton. Today I'm representing the Riverina Highlands Land Care Network, but I'm also here as an individual and I'm a farmer, I'm a tourism operator and 222 hectares of my property protects critically endangered boxgum grassy woodland, which is now only extant in 5% of its former range. While my property is not affected visually or personally by these transmission towers, I'm familiar with the boxgum grassy woodland habitat, which is represented in other landholders' properties. Our Land Care Network covers the former Tumit and Gundagai shires. Our region includes a large component of the area impacted by the Hume Link, including locations such as Ajung Billy, Bon Bali, Brungle, Yavon Creek, Lower Bago and Gilmore. The proposed corridor of the Hume Link Energy Project runs over many sites that are in the Riverina Highlands Land Care Network, which, in conjunction with many other government organisations and landowners, have invested tens of thousands of dollars and thousands of human hours of labour into projects to improve habitat and enhance biodiversity. Some of this has been funded by incentive grants, but almost inevitably there's a 50-50% that comes from landholders themselves that have invested this money. Many of these project sites contain critically endangered and threatened species of fauna and flora, such as the Macquarie perch, which is endangered, the Burulung frog, which is critically endangered, and habitats such as the Kulak turpentine, sorry, Kulak Tumit serpentine shrubby woodland, which is an endangered ecological community, and the boxgum grassy woodland that I mentioned before, which is critically endangered. With respect to these two habitats, the Kulak Tumit serpentine shrubby woodland and boxgum grassy woodland, these habitats are refuge for a number of rare woodland birds, including the hooded robin, the diamond firetail, the gangang, the wood, dusky wood swallow, speckled warbler, brown tree creeper, varied sutella, little lorikeet, brown, black-chinned honeyeater, the turquoise parrot, the barking owl, the scarlet robin and the flame robin. All of these are vulnerable and have been made more vulnerable by the fires that we experienced. There is also evidence of the region honeyeater in our area and it is critically endangered. The Riverina Highlands Land Care Network has written to TransGrid and strongly urged them to look at options. We are extremely concerned that the impact of this project will have on our members and our habitats that we've been protecting. We are now experiencing the twin crises of both climate breakdown and the extinction crisis. Both issues need to be urgently addressed. Hume Link is working to address the climate breakdown by bringing renewables into the grid, we need that. But Land Care is working to avert the extinction crisis in the local areas that it works and this is vital too. We can't address one of the crises and threaten the other. Of course, there needs to be compromise and the compromise is placing the transmission underground. If we do that, the easements will be smaller. Some of those birds I mentioned will only fly 30 to 50 metres, that's as far as they fly, the tiny little ones, because they feel threatened by predation. If we've got whopping great easements, you may as well just obliterate the whole habitat because they can't move, they can't repopulate. So, having less of an easement means that those birds are still able to utilise the habitat. Underground is better for our landscapes, for our vulnerable flora and fauna and our community and still allows the important work of bringing renewables into the grid. Thank you.
Thanks, Chair. Barney Hymes, I'm just here representing my community. I'd very much like to thank you and your committee for holding this inquiry and especially coming down here today to listen to our concerns. And I'd also very much like to thank everybody in this room who have spent hundreds of hours, if not thousands of hours, and travelled thousands and thousands of kilometres to be heard with our concerns. And it's just great when a community comes together like this to actually fight for something that we don't want and we don't want to have imposed upon us, especially by a foreign-owned company. Look, I'd also, just, I'd like to be quite brief. Louise has outlined a lot of things I was going to say, but, you know, this project is a really important project as far as renewables are concerned, but destroying the environment, to save the environment, just seems absolutely ridiculous and undergrounding is obviously the answer here. It's not just destroying the environment, it's destroying lives and livelihoods of our agricultural producers, but also our community members who will have to put up with these overhead, ugly, dangerous, high-voltage power lines. So, you know, that's absolutely un-Australian. We should be absolutely working our best to get the best solution here and it's obviously undergrounding. I'm not sure that we've heard much about biosecurity today, but biosecurity is going to be really important during this construction phase of this project. And to have the amount of crew that it's going to require to put these overhead power lines up is going to mean that everyone's traipsing from one property to the next, spreading weeds, possibly spreading diseases, and it would seem with the much narrower corridor required for undergrounding, that it's going to be, from a biosecurity point of view, much, much safer, much easier to monitor and much easier to rehabilitate the land back to where it was before without this massive destruction of habitat, which Louise has pointed out is the home to many endangered species of flora and fauna. So, it's just an absolute no-brainer as far as I'm concerned. One of the things that does concern me is that the New South Wales Government is putting a lot of money into this project and it would be my recommendation that you really need to have the NRC audit this project and make sure that you're getting value for money. And if undergrounding is amateurised over 80 years, I imagine that undergrounding has got to be the best value for money. And I'm, you know, I'm being told by a number of people that they will accept much less compensation for an underground power line to go through their property and not destroy their lives and their farming activities. And of course, you know, we live in a beautiful part of the world here, we've potentially got the ability to build a rail trail through many of these towns. I think we've seen the rail trail that's been constructed in Wurundjeri recently, it's had 70,000 visitations already. So, but nobody wants to ride a pushbike under a high-voltage power line. So, you know, we've got lots of reasons why we want to go underground, every one of them makes a lot of sense. And I think to escalate this even further, we possibly need a Senate inquiry because it is a national project, there is eventually going to be 28,000 kilometres of these power lines after these 14 years. So, we need to get it right. So, that would be my thoughts and recommendations. Once again, thank you for coming today and thank you for listening to us.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and to the whole Committee for this opportunity to present on behalf of my community of Batlow. I'm a third-generation resident and small tourism operator who lost my home and farm-stay business in the Dunnes Road mega-fire of 2019, 2020. Like many, I still have not rebuilt due to a range of factors, not the least of which are timber shortages. Hume Link TransGrid's proposal to above-ground 78-metre-high transmission towers and wires is the next wave of devastation for our region, even before we've had the chance to fully recover mentally, environmentally, financially and socially from three and a half years ago. I recognise and endorse the need for Australia to transition to alternate energy in line with national and international standards and agreements towards a net-zero future. Many of us here have lived experience in the build of the Snowy Hydro Scheme, in what was hailed then as one of the engineering wonders of the modern world, in an era when Australia dared to have a vision. There are many expert submissions that have been made to this committee that present a range of well-researched triple-bottom-line arguments as to why undergrounding power lines must be considered for the next nation-building project. Batlow lost its core employers when the cannery, the Batlow Fruit Cooperative and the forestry workshops all closed in the early 2000s. In 2018, the Snowy Valley's Destination Management Plan recommended the key strategic direction for the LGA was to capitalise on its natural assets through creating signature attractions and investing in infrastructure to support tourism and visitation to the region. The bushfires destroyed many of these significant natural assets, including the iconic Sugar Pine Walk, large tracts of alpine ash, vineyards, orchards, pine plantations, as well as badly damaging the Hume and Hovel Walking Track and Yarungabilly Cave. Built-infrastrucure was also destroyed, including Selwyn Snowfields, heritage-listed buildings at Kiandra and 10 High Country Mountain Huts in the Cozihosco National Park. Millions of native and farmed animals were killed as a direct result of these fires. State and federal governments have injected tourism investment to assist this region to recover, one notable example being the $4 million for the 100-kilometre Snowy Valley Sculpture Trail. It is counterintuitive to invest in tourism to help support visitation for scenic purposes whilst at the same time vandalising our landscape with outdated, ugly, hazardous infrastructure. When my young adult sons take over when I leave off, I don't want them to reflect want them to reflect on what could have been. I don't want them to regret our generation's decisions that will cost them in infrastructure maintenance and outdated ways of transmitting power when internationally we know decisions are being made now by advanced democratic economies to underground power infrastructure for a multitude of reasons, not the least of which is to secure supply in the event of catastrophic bushfires which are an ongoing inevitability. The next generation are the custodians of our decisions. We must choose wisely. Now is the time to defend our communities, our economy and the environment by future-proofing critical energy infrastructure. It's contingent on our government, network planners and operators to adopt best practice, planning and design resilience into the grid by undergrounding in bushfire-prone regions and heavily forested corridors. We must ensure our future generations are provided with the most sustainable, long-term solution that will protect people, the environment, businesses and communities. Lives and livelihoods are paramount. Thank you.
Okay. Mister Chairlady and committee people, welcome and thank you for coming and giving us a hearing. I'm Bill Kingwell. I'm a fourth-generation Groyzeer and I am the chairman of HUMLINK Action Group and we've been in existence for three years, over three years. And I represent most of the landholders that are affected on this line. And in our membership, we've got six hundred members on our closed Facebook site. And I would like to commend a petition that we have signed of three thousand signatures. Some are online and some are physically being signed. And they were, the petition was Stop HUMLINK Towers, Underground, Not Overhead. And the thing that I'd also like to speak on is the visual amenity of this HUMLINK powerline going down the Gilmore Valley. And there's some photographs, large photographs that I should have had here but I haven't. And I've just got them on a brochure that we've handed out. And this is taken from Carey Street in Tumet, what it will look like down the Gilmore Valley and from Batlow Road at Batlow, what that powerline will look like down the Gilmore Valley from Batlow. And we would not, the community does not want that visual amenity to see that relic of the past that is going to be put upon us. And that is going to turn the lovely Gilmore Valley into ugly valleys. And we do not want that. The community does not want that. There's been a lot of criticism of TransGrid here. Everyone is hanging TransGrid out. But the reality of this whole project is TransGrid is the one that is delivering the project. The multinational pension funds out of Canada, the person of all the entity, which is the state government, which is the Electricity Transmission Ministerial Holding Corporation, is the one that is behind it, which was, as we used to all know, an electricity commission. And they are the ones that are doing this. And that is why it is being done in such a regulatory way upon us. And of all the landholders would know that when they have dealt with TransGrid, those people are nothing more than a process server. And that is one of the most disturbing things that most landholders have found is how they've been handled, you know? This could have been handled a lot easier from day one. When we first met with TransGrid, I said to those people, that team, you know, pay these people more than what they think their land is worth and talk to them and ask them and you will get through. But no, that's all history. And I mean, we're on our fifth project manager and we've had two teams, a change of teams. And every time there's the people in the CCG and our executives say, oh, we've got another one out of the TransGrid revolving door. And you've got these people that when we line up, you know, to meet them in the committees, we'll have our people that have been on it, you know, been on this thing for three years. We'll have ten years or twelve years of experience. And the TransGrid people that are lucky if they've been there for twelve months between the lot of them, you know? It's just an education process. And really, this as the, you know, how TransGrid has handled us has been abysmal, you know? Public relations, you know, failure. Anyway, there's other things I wanted to say. And that was, as far as, in my experience as a bushfire captain of thirty-five years at Ajun Billy, in my time as a captain, I have fought two fires that have been lit by the high voltage power lines. One was back in the eighties and that was on a sixty-six KV powerline, the Burr and Juck de Wogga, which is a smaller one. And two thousand and three Riverbend Fire was started on the O3 powerline, which is a three thirty KV A. And that fire burnt fifty thousand hectares there in two weeks. And it was lit by that powerline because I was the first one there to it. And the helicopter that was there fighting it caught the bucket on that powerline. And it's lucky it didn't bring him down. But anyway, that fire got over the Murumbidji River and burnt round over Burr and Juck and back across towards Wejaspur and got into the pine forest. And it was just lucky that we had a change in the weather and some rain. Otherwise, it would have burnt, burnt that pine forest out. Anyway, that's, that's that part of it.
In the interest of time, sorry, do you, do you want to, is it okay if we just move to some other speakers now? And if we've got time at the end, perhaps we can hear from you again. Sorry, yeah. We just, we've got a number of other speakers to get.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, no, that's fine. Yeah, just in the interest of fairness, at the end, if we've got extra time, by all means.
And I've just got one line to finish on. And that is, if this powerline is put underground, and that's what we've stated all along from the landholders that, that I represent, you can start tomorrow. But if it's going to be overhead, we're going to fight you to the last man standing. And we've structured our whole thing for that. Okay, thank you.
Thanks so much. Thank you. I'll just call the next four people I have listed here. Harry Lucas, apologies if I mispronounce your name, Renata Lunadello, Rachel Purcell and Belinda Rand.
Harry Lucas is an apology.
Thank you. And if you could also just start with your names, just for handstart as well, it will help identify. Sorry, I should.
Good afternoon. I'm Renata Lunadello. Thank you for coming to Tumet today to listen to our concerns about TransGrid and the HUMLINK transmission line. I'm a farmer from Yas producing sheep for superfine wool. Twenty years ago, I inherited the property from my father. I'm also a member of the Yas and Upper Lachlan Shire Community Consultative Group. TransGrid engaged GHD Proprietary Limited to conduct a comparison of transmission line route options for the HUMLINK project and recommend an optimal route that meets agreed criteria. The objectives of, objectives of the assessment were to compare the alternative routes and recommend an optimal route. At no time did TransGrid community place managers inform me that I could have an official route refinement review done in the Yas Valley. Other reviews were done from Bannerby, Green Hills, Pjar Dam and Tumet. There is no evidence that this was done from west of Bango Nature Reserve to Yas. Repeated requests to have this done have been met with contemptuous disregard by TransGrid. TransGrid general manager said at the December 2022 CCG meeting, it's too late. This was followed up by TransGrid providing the most fanciful excuses for not undertaking the route refinement assessment. Bordering on my property are fifteen residences on the dead-end Zootch Road. The existing three thirty KV transmission line runs directly across the entrance to Zootch Road, then crosses Wogila Road to the south, five hundred metres from Zootch Road entrance. The new proposed HUMLINK five hundred KV line will cross Wogila Road to the north, three hundred metres from the Zootch Road entrance. In a bushfire scenario, these people would be in a fire cauldron. In January 2017, birds were electrocuted by a transmission line at a wind farm near Canberra, starting a fire which burned out three thousand four hundred hectares and caused millions of dollars of damage. A nine hundred and fifty hectare property near Bangendor had eight hundred and eighty hectares burnt out in under an hour. A biodiversity site assessment was conducted on my property which mapped the entire transmission line route. The Ferry Hole Creek crossed by the transmission line has been mapped as having biodiverse riparian land identified as box gum woodland in the east and western sides. This vegetation supports threatened ecological communities listed as critically endangered under the Commonwealth EPBC Act and New South Wales BC Act. I'd like to tender into evidence page three, five, twelve and thirteen of the report. TransGrid says they are, they are building a super transmission highway. They are also building an actual, actual super roadway through our paddocks. Two four metre wide roads to support the weight of a two hundred and eighty ton crane and to allow multiple concrete trucks to pass by each other. Each of the eight hundred and fifty tower sites along the route requires seventeen concrete trucks, each weighing thirty-two tonne, loaded with eight point four cubic metres of concrete for the tower footings. Thick concrete slabs measuring seventy by fifty metres to support the crane at each of the tower sites. There is no plausible way, contrary to what was said at the hearing last Tuesday by a TransGrid executive, that the towers can be constructed without building this super roadway unless they intend to helicopter or drone in two hundred and eighty ton crane drilling rigs and concrete trucks to each of the eight hundred and fifty tower sites. Excuse my voice. It will be a three hundred and sixty kilometre monumental road of destruction through valuable environmental habitat and productive farmland throughout regional New South Wales. I truly believe that the whole HUMLINK project has been flawed from the start and I trust that you will make it right and socially acceptable by recommending that the HUMLINK transmission line goes underground. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Rachel Purcell. I live just out of Tumet with my husband and son, where HUMLINK is going to cross the Tumet River. So there'll be four towers imposed on us. And the first is about three hundred metres from our door. And we certainly did not find out about this from TransGrid. The next two send the lines straight over the site we've chosen to build our home. From there, it goes to our boundary up the side of our property, behind all our neighbours. The impact there will come with a significant production loss, but mostly the huge safety concerns. It also restricts our ability to manage for environmental benefits. And we've already delayed a lot of biodiversity plantings. And we're just one property like this. It's terrifying to think about what will happen in the event of a fire with the line so close to us and our neighbours' homes. So TransGrid talk about de-energising if the RFS ask, but their own staff have told us that it will never happen. So we should be doing everything possible to limit the impact of the next mega-fire. So put it underground. They've also told us that at no point will anyone be tapping into HUMLINK. So that could be another story that changes to suit the situation. So the issues are bigger than just the upfront cost of construction. And you've heard a lot about that. So impacted communities, we're not only paying for these projects in our power bills, but with our mental health, loss of income, destruction of our properties, our local environment and possibly even our lives. So they are the real costs of the project.
Yeah.
The AER have called it a perceived lack of community consultation. And they have said they can recommend improvements, but they cannot enforce changes. For many of us, consultation hasn't been meaningful or transparent. We've been asking for years to get information on the practical impacts of day-to-day farm management. Simple things like fence safety, electric shocks, health of animals, we've seen evidence come out that the EMFs actually are bad for cattle. TransGrid cannot or will not give us clear answers. So we haven't just been asking for route refinement, more compensation or just do it underground. So they're clearly not the experts on undergrounding. And their comments are an example of the misinformation that has continuously been thrown at us since the start. The reports are full of flaws, incorrect information, questions aren't answered or the information is delayed, incomplete, unreliable and biased. Our communities deserve respect and the truth. So whatever is built is going to have lasting impacts. And we ask that you make these as minimal as possible. And they wonder why we're angry but make no effort to fix things. There is no social licence in this area. And I think that is because they know in the current regulatory environment, it doesn't matter what we want. So it's not just about what the benefits of each option are to rural communities. The whole project planning, selection and consultation process is flawed. So we are asking that underground will limit that impact, but not just us, not just landholders here, our community here, our environment here, but the whole of regional New South Wales and ultimately the whole of Australia. Thank you.
My name is Belinda Rand, Madam Chair and members of the committee. We really appreciate you coming this long distance and to hear our overwhelming concerns regarding the overhead high voltage power lines or transmission lines. My husband and I live on a property on the outskirts of Batlow. We were catastrophically impacted by the Duns Road fires. We lost our organic orchard, our sheep and all our infrastructure of thirty years. Only our house, our mud brick house, survived. We are still rebuilding and it's been a very difficult three and a half years. We received correspondence in February 2020 that our property would be used as a corridor for HUMLINK, which could include our over our house and our planned orchard, new orchard. But we would just have to wait and see. Although now, to be fair, TransGrid have moved the corridor to build the towers over our gate. Thus, the, that land locks us. And in the case of a fire, smoke and the possibility, possibilities, it's very, very dangerous. The western side of the Great Divide, in most cases, experienced dry summers and dry lightning strikes are a common occurrence, causing bushfires. This definitely needs to be considered. We read in TransGrid's submission to the committee on page two, and I will quote a short paragraph, "TransGrid recognises the significance of meaningful community engagement. TransGrid involves local communities in the decision-making process, allowing..." TransGrid involves local communities in the decision-making process, allowing their concerns to be raised and addressed by engaging early and regularly with various stakeholders, including land owners, etc." Just for time, I'll cut it short. "TransGrid remains committed to understanding and using words like considering. TransGrid will provide a significant and lasting positive social legacy to people living and working near transmission assets." In our experience in the last three and a half years, this is a blatant untruth. This is hollow, empty corporate speak. Actually, the opposite is true. TransGrid is first and foremost an international company delivering to their shareholders in Canada and in Dubai. We implore, urge, we plea with the committee not to forget its business, the business of the government, to deliver to its shareholders, the people of Australia, now and for the future generations. Do not let us be at the mercy of an international company determining our future. Bushfires are inevitable, causing dangers and risks to farmers, farms and their communities. We ask you to require Hume Link to use the vast tract of public land. Mr Redman came to our property because we live on a mountain and it's a very high vantage point and we showed him the large tract of public land. And we said to him, what would you do if you were in our situation? He said, I would lobby the government too. I would not like this over my house or my family's house. I would not like it as well. But yet, when he went back to Sydney, things changed. He forgot about it. So we are asking that the vast tract of public land, where possible, be used, coming out of Snowy 2.0 and as it gets closer to the communities, be put underground. We also believe that reducing the costs by having a smaller easement will reduce the offsets. At the moment, I think there's, I think I last read, $98 million have been put aside for offsets for the easement. So please, we believe this is a clear choice, go underground. Thank you very much, Madam Chair and Committee.
Thank you.
I'll now call the last four people we have listed to speak. They are Jessie Reynolds, Andrea Strong, Rebecca Tobin and Paul Sturgis.
Hi, I'm Jessie Reynolds. Thank you today for allowing me this opportunity. I am directly and indirectly affected with the transmission line in four different places along the Hume Link proposed line, Wagga, Yavon Creek, Kilmacat and Brundle Creek. I am a mum to four girls and a third and fourth generation farmer and I work on my family farm in the Tummet area and live in the Yavon Creek area on my husband's farm. My main points of concern, bushfire concerns. I am currently a volunteer member of the Dallo Bushfire Brigade, which I live and work. And we were directly impacted by the Duns Road fire, where we lost 95% of my in-laws' farm, including the block we live on. We lost hundreds of heads of livestock and countless amounts of trees, shrubs, not to mention wildlife and ecosystems. Data shows that the bushfire risk is getting higher as the temperatures are rising with global warming, making towers and lines even more dangerous. Our dated transmission tower technology significantly increases the risk of deadly bushfires and makes it harder to fight them, threatening lives, properties, people and native animals. You've been, you've heard it all, all that's happening overseas. I'm not going to go over all that again because it's all just happening. And next to point, environmental concern, clearing of bushland and farmland ruining native flora and fauna, ecosystems that they live in while increasing the risk of erosion on farmland has been looked after by farmers over the years. Agricultural impacts are huge for our family and we will be not able to use, or it's reduced aerial application of fertiliser sprays and seeds. The EMF concerns, we breed bulls for a living and there's some papers to say that it can affect milk and also can affect what sex is bred from animals that are joined underneath power lines. It's all in my submission, but we breed bulls, we need boys and we need milk to make our calves grow. Biosecurity concerns are huge for us. We have proposed four and a half kilometres on just one block of transmission lines and over seven kilometres of access tracks. So we will, it's a huge problem for us with the amount of vehicles coming in and anything like foot and mouth, lumpy skin and then weeds, you know, it's all really big concern for us and it's both underground and above ground. The mental health concerns are huge. I'm concerned that the mental health of people who have to live with, look at, work under these 18 metre high transmission lines. I am a sufferer of depression and this imposed strain has had a huge impact on my mental health, which in turn affects my relationships with my children, my husband and my family. The cultural and heritage concerns. The proposed lines at Kilmacat, we're very close to Muujen Nature Reserve. The reserve is also locally known as Pine Mountain due to the abundant black cypress pine, which gives the reserve a very dark appearance and makes it stand out from other high points in the area. As Louise said, all of those, it's got the, all the native red box, well, blakely red grums, as well as native animals, birds, reptiles, six which are threatened bird species. It also protects Aboriginal cultures, heritage sites, landscapes and other features with high significance to the Aboriginal community. Whereas the valleys were focused for living, the high peaks and hills are associated with ritual. Initiations are known to have occurred there within the ranges and the hills up until the 1920s. The towers are proposed to be a mere 20 to 50 metres from the boundary of this significant area. The New South Wales Government needs to be protecting areas of such high significance from extra fire risk. Placing towers this close is a huge risk and moving away, undergrounding needs considering. Visually, the impacts at Kilmacat Valley is one of the most picturesque areas in New South Wales and we are lucky to call it home. We've been the custodians now for 25 years and plan to be there forever. The future is what I strive for. Over the years, we've planted hundreds of trees for shade, erosion control and animal habitat. Now to just watch them be cut down without any implementation or an offset to replace these trees that have taken hundreds of years to grow. In conclusion, we can't put a value on the land. We are running a family farm. We work to live here, not work to sell the land. We work to be in a happy mindset and undergrounding will allow this for us and future generations, preserving and protecting the land from future fires and allowing us to continue to make improvements. I think that the government needs to consider all non-market costs of overhead transmission lines, bushfires, biodiversity, the visual amenity, regional development, tourism and agricultural productivity for the next 80 to 100 years and taking it all into account when making the decisions. Farmers and landowners need to be valued by the government for the contribution to the economy, society and the management of the land and landscape, remembering that without farmers, especially farming families, we, the state and country, would have nothing to eat, nothing to wear. Everyone would be lost without them, lost without us.
Andrea Strong, Hume Link Alliance Incorporated. Undergrounding Hume Link is in the public interest. Undergrounding is the efficient option. It's the least cost option when you include all the costs, the financial costs, the environmental costs and the community costs, the triple bottom line. The construction cost of undergrounding is a one-off. However, the environmental and community benefits of undergrounding are enduring, including preserving landscapes of great natural beauty for the next 80 to 100 years, encouraging regional development, maintaining the productive efficiency of agriculture, promoting tourism, reducing the risk of bushfires and protecting biodiversity. The rules of the national electricity market don't require all the environmental and community costs to be taken into account when assessing overhead transmission lines. Omitting significant indirect costs when evaluating projects is inconsistent with New South Wales Government policy. New South Wales Government Cost Benefit Guidelines require all the environmental and community costs to be taken into account for projects worth more than $10 million. Decisions are being made about projects in the national electricity market worth billions of dollars and are not taking into account all the environmental and community costs. Governments overseas have come to the conclusion that when you take into account all the environmental costs of overhead transmission lines, undergrounding is the least cost option. The community wants decisions on undergrounding to be made on the basis of the facts. In the hearings last week, it was stated the undergrounding trench is 50 metres wide and more than two metres deep and filled with a slurry. But the Hume Link undergrounding study said that two, 1.3 metre wide trenches would be required, 1.25 metres deep, with an overall easement width of around 15 metres. Top soils reinstated and most agricultural operations can be carried out as usual after the cables are installed. Studies overseas indicate that almost no impact on crop yields above underground cables, which speaks to the fact that there are no ongoing impacts to agriculture, no heat impacts from cables, no sterilisation of the soil. It was also stated at the hearing last week that TransGrid works hand in glove with the RFS. But RFS captains and incident commanders have said that in the 2019 Duns Road fire, when the fire was 400 hectares and burning up the 330 KV O51 line at night, there was a call to turn off the line. But the RFS on the ground couldn't get the line turned off. That fire went on to burn for two weeks with 147 homes lost and 386 hectares burnt, including 50,000 hectares of pine plantation and 20,000 hectares of hardwood forest, with the value of the timber alone estimated at more than $5 billion. The cost to the state of overhead lines impeding bushfire control far outweighs the extra cost of undergrounding transmission. With global warming, the risk and costs of out of control bushfires will increase. We also believe that undergrounding will be the fastest way to deliver the Hume Link project. The community will work with TransGrid to deliver Hume Link on time. The recent State of the Environment Report found that Australia is failing the environment on almost all every measure. An important measure is loss of habitat. Hume Link will worsen our performance on this measure. The referral to the Environment Protection and Biodiversity Conservation Act states Hume Link has an action area of 48,332 hectares and will impact matters of national environmental significance, including 82 threatened species and six threatened ecological communities. Initial assessments identify that 1,862 hectares of critically endangered woodland will be directly impacted. With the underground easement, only a quarter of the overhead easement and the potential to horizontal directional drill certain sections, there are significant biodiversity benefits with undergrounding. Undergrounding is a means to avoid and mitigate habitat loss and biodiversity impacts. As we transition to net zero, we need environmentally responsible transmission as well as generation. Undergrounding Hume Link is an environmentally responsible, is environmentally responsible transmission and the least cost long-term solution for New South Wales.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Committee members. My name's Paul Sturgis. I've got no notes, I'm just going to speak off the top of my head. Together with my wife, we run a beef cattle operation and eucalyptus harvesting operation on 156 hectares on the top of the Gilmore Valley. So it's called the Snubber Range where we live. So we're east of Batlow and west of the Blaring Reservoir, all on top of the range. We look down the Gilmore Valley and we look over the Blaring Valley, very picturesque spot. So what I want to talk to you about is the fire risk. Because like most of the people that spoke, we got totally burnt out in Duns Road. The only thing we saved was our actual buildings and 80 head of cattle. We lost all our bush country, all our pasture country. And on that day, there was four of us at home, my wife, my son and our mate that lives with us. And we fought hard for two, two and a half hours when Duns Road fire hit us, impacted us from the west. It jumped off the range at Batlow and on to the 330 KV A line, which is line O51, runs to Wagga and it runs east-west. So I fail to say that we've already got 233 KV A lines on our place. They come from 23 up through Bago State Forest. And when they hit the top of our place, they split, one goes to Yas and one goes to Wagga. So we've got O3, which is Yas, and O51, which is Wagga. And it was O51 line where the fire impacted. It was approximately half a kilometre from our boundary on a steep incline and it funneled straight up the power line. The power line was alight 10 minutes before any of the bush country around it because it just funneled straight up the power line, the way it was faced. So we couldn't make a stand anywhere on our property because of those existing power lines apart from our house yard. And we, we actually fought the fire from our front door. It burnt right to the front door. We had a box hedge 10 feet away from the actual building and the box hedge burnt. That's how close it was. Okay. So the other day, I watched the first session you've done on the parliamentary website and TransGrid made a statement that no fires had been recorded from the, any of these big transmission lines like the 330 or 500 lines. And that's just a blatant lie. Because where I am, those lines that we got there now, they were built in the 70s. And from where I can see, I can see three lines, I can see O2 and then the two that come through me. So on O51, just after it was built, they slapped together at where they crossed the Gilmore Valley in a storm one morning just before daylight and started a fire. It wasn't really high fire danger, so it didn't burn too much, but it actually started a fire. And then in the 80s, on the O2 line, it arced out with vegetation underneath, growing up through it, which is highly volatile because it's oil-bearing eucalypts. It's one of the really high oil bearers. So on a hot day, the paper comes out of the tree and it arcs down the ground from the line. So that burnt several thousand hectares of Kosciuszko National Park that was on the eastern side of Blaring Dam. Two weeks after that fire, helicopters were still working on that fire and it actually arced halfway between us and the Blaring Dam on the western side and same thing. Lucky the choppers were there, there was two choppers there and lucky they got around it pretty quick, otherwise that would have burnt us out as well. Now, we already got six towers on these, these lines, three towers on each line. With this Hume Link line coming through, we'll have another six towers. So we'll have 12 towers on 156 hectares, two 60 metre wide easements, which are approximately kilometer and a half each long, and a 75 or 70 metre easement, which is about the same distance, 1.6 k's or 1.7 k's. So if this new line goes through, our place is totally undefendable. We can't make a stand anywhere. And reference was made to the Duns Road fire at Yavon Creek. I was there that night and we all must had that fire. If we could have got those power lines turned off, I reckon we had that fire. But they wouldn't turn them off, so we weren't going to go near them. We had to sit back and wait. And when that fire come out of there at 11 o'clock next day, it just overrun us. There's probably 300 blokes there and all we could do is fall into the country and let it go. And that's when it made its first run to Tom Rumba and that fire made three other runs over the next five or six. And that fire made three other runs over the next five or six days. 360,000 hectares or something. And that's total devastation. It really is. So my wife and I, we've talked about this time and time again. If we had a choice between Duns Road fire and HUMLINK, we'd take Duns Road fire any day of the week. Because it comes, you deal with it, it goes. HUMLINK has come and we're still trying to deal with it and we're going to have it for 100 years. So I'd urge you, truly, put pen to paper, talk to people, whatever you've got to do, this thing's got to go underground for us all. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the committee. My name's Rebecca Tobin. I'm representing HUMLINK United. I've also sat on the steering committee for the undergrounding feasibility study by TransGrid. I also am on the CCG committee and have been since its inception. And also like my friend Jess, my entire family have now all become Dalot Bushfire Brigade volunteers after the Duns Road fire. We have seen over the last three years, people's health deteriorate and in some cases fail under the stress and absolute lack of empathy and human consideration in this project. This project is failing regional people as they feel meaningless, irrelevant and not considered. In 2021, a survey of landholders impacted was conducted by Wagga MP Dr Joe McGur. Of the respondents, 76% stated that HUMLINK has negatively impacted their mental health. As this statistic was taken early on, we as a community have witnessed an increase in anxiety, depression, isolation and increasingly hearing of some members contemplating suicide. We have grave concerns that the largest cost of HUMLINK will be people. This has further been exacerbated by TransGrid's bullying tactics. Mis-truths, misinformation and withholding of information repeatedly used in an attempt to push through their overhead proposal. TransGrid's understanding of undergrounding is as outdated and relic as their overhead transmission plan. TransGrid have stated to the community that they are advocating for undergrounding but have shown no evidence of this. You cannot advocate for a better outcome if you A, are not up to date on undergrounding practices, B, mislead government and the public with mistruths and incorrect information to keep pushing your overhead agenda, C, don't appear to care about the concerns raised by the people and communities to begin with. TransGrid's ignorance here is only building a wedge further between the community and themselves. Social licence will only be obtained if HUMLINK goes underground. Living the nightmare that was the Duns Road fire, it highlighted the reality that we can't fight fires in the vicinity of transmission lines. RFS stipulates this. TransGrid say they work hand in glove with the RFS. We know from experience and the fire ground that this is not the case. And even during the CCG meetings that we have had, when we have raised bushfire, they have said that they are having difficulties speaking with RFS. Adding more high voltage power lines exposes us all. Bushfire prone communities and all those impacted in HUMLINK's path to an even greater level of risk that can only be described as negligent and deeming our communities undefendable. There will be an increased risk to human life in every fire for the next 80 years of the overhead line's lifetime. I ask, how can we put firefighters, volunteers, families, communities, people at further risk when the risks are already so high? There is no acceptable risk when it comes to potential loss of human life, when we have the ability to eliminate the risk by undergrounding. Undergrounding HUMLINK is a viable solution. It is a socially conscious, ethical, safer, more environmentally geared, sustainable and I would have thought more Australian in the hope that we leave no one at the detriment of an overhead option. And I would like to add from a personal perspective, undergrounding would be a relief, a return of sleep, a removal of fear, anxiety and depression and an elimination of mental health concerns that have resulted from the HUMLINK overhead transmission project. We should want to be proud of the infrastructure we put in place to safeguard our electricity network into the future, something that the next generation can marvel at rather than gasp at massive archaic overhead infrastructure. We saw our previous state government weigh in, and rightly so, on the proposed 73 metre residential building at Borangaroo, stating it didn't want future generations reflecting on the government's decision-making 100 years down the track and perceiving that developers were put before people. Do we really want future generations to look back and question the decision to create a 360 kilometre long, 70 metre wide scar of clear felled land where trees are replaced by approximately 985 metre towers and wires across New South Wales? It is difficult to envision regional New South Wales in this way, a thick cobweb of transmission lines traversing this beautiful country. Our safety, our people, our homes, our communities and our environment, our Australia should come first. We should be investing now for not only us but the legacy we leave the next generation. Our legacy should see HUMLINK underground. In the words of our Premier Chris Minns in his victory speech, "A statement we hold with great hope. The people of New South Wales have voted to put in a government that will put people at the heart of all decision-making and we will not let them down. We ask now, please do not let us down."
If witnesses are able to, if they could pass their written notes to Hansard, it will greatly assist the transcription process. But there's obviously no need to do that if you're not comfortable. But if that is okay with witnesses, that is of benefit to our Hansard people. That's all of the attendees that had registered yes to speak. I'll now move to those noting we are running behind schedule, but we still have time left in the allotted hour and a half we'd set aside. Those that registered, they may want to speak. If there's anyone in the audience that wanted to come forward and identify themselves. Yeah, come to the table. You'll need to speak into the microphone just for Hansard and for our audiovisual stream as well. And again, if you could identify yourself by your name.
Yes, my name's Chris Piper. I'm an ex-TransGrid Electricity Commission Snowy Mountains Hydro engineer, electrical electronics engineering. And I was a system operator running the power grids for New South Wales. The only item I'd like you to take into consideration is one regarding the genetic effect of living within a large electromagnetic spectrum. And that's caused through the high voltage AC system, not the DC. And in that system, I've been subject to this. It affects your internal organs when you work in that large electromagnetic environment all the time. And if you want the evidence, there's quite a bit in America. To put it very mildly, simply, out of 90, this was a survey we did within the Electricity Commission in the power stations, I worked in Munmore and Arraring, 92 operators, 84 had girls and eight had males. So there is a very significant effect on our bodies when we work in and around large electromagnetic fields. And so anything housing or people within, and look, it's probably up to 100, 120 metres within a large power line, you will be affected. I know I was affected very much. And I'd just like you to consider that when your thoughts. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for allowing me to speak. My name's Peter Barrett. I'm a farmer on Batlow Road. We're facing towers coming through our property and we'll have two towers approximately 300 metres from my back door, which I'm sure nobody else would like. TransGrid has been appalling to deal with. They've been dishonest, they've been secretive. It's just been a nightmare for the three and a half years that we've been facing it. For three and a half years, we've had this hanging over our head, we can't do anything. Do we fix the cattle yards? No, why put money into it? Because I'm not going to live there when the power lines come through. I've had the local estate agent come out and just give me a valuation. The valuation he gave me was X amount. He said if the power lines came through, I said, can you give me a rough idea? He said, cut the valuation in half. He said, you will lose half the price of this property. During the Duns Road fires, we were impacted twice. We were only saved twice by aerial appliances. If they hadn't been there pulling water out of our dams, which are directly under where the power lines are going through, we would have lost everything. And that happened twice. I also use helicopters to aerially spray and fertilise three times a year. I've been informed by my operator that he can no longer do it as it's too dangerous to fly near the power line, so he won't be able to service us anymore, which will make our property worthless because it'll just turn to weed. We have another property down the road, just on a personal note, we were going to put some eco lodges on at one point. We named the property Mill Merron, which is a corrupted Aboriginal word meaning beautiful view. Well, it'll be looking straight over all these power lines running right past the property. So that section's gone. As a farmer, I want to leave the property better than when I found it, which I'm doing for my children or grandchildren. But with the power lines coming through, I won't be able to do that because it'll be a worthless piece of dirt. So anyway, that's my bit. Thanks.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name's Michael Kingwell. I'm a farmer from Adrenbilly. I'm also a group captain and have been a deputy group captain over the years, for about the last 20 years. My brigade areas cover about 80,000 hectares, a fair bit of pollen forest in that, in the Adrenbilly area. We had a fire earlier this year, the day before Australia Day. And what saved our bacon was large air tankers out of Sydney. They sent two large air tankers up. Where this fire was is the proposed route of the 500 KVA power line. This fire burnt approximately 500 hectares by the time we got it under control. We had the two air tankers drop their loads. The air tankers come up, they have a Learjet out in front to work out the runs. I talked to the Learjet, tell him where I want them, to drop their loads, 15,000 litres of retardant, you know, 737. They dropped two loads and I requested if we could get another two loads and they said we'll be back in an hour because I had to fly back to Sydney, load up and come back. Now, where this fire was, was a kilometre off the Nanangro Pine Plantation. This is the northern end of the Tumit Plantation area. If that power line had have been there, we wouldn't have had those 737s, we wouldn't have had the helicopters, we wouldn't have had the light planes. And it's fair chance that the fire would have got into the pine. Over the last 20 years, my experience with fighting pine plantation fires, you either need rain or you wait for it out the other side because once it gets on fire, you can't put it out. Now, if that power line had have been there and it got into that pine plantation, chances are it would have burnt the rest of the pine plantations in the Tumit-Tumburumba area and the mills out here would be pulled up and this town would be a ghost town. If that power line is put in, that's the potential we have, it needs to go underground. Just telling you another quick story, a mate of mine who's retired now, is a power station operator up at Cabramurra. In the 2003 fires, it was burning in the national park, they had, I think it was the O2 power line, 330 was switched off. He got the call from Sydney, it was a hot day, of course it was, it was bushfires though, to turn that power line on, that they wanted the power for the air conditioners in Sydney. And he said, no, I will not turn it on because there are people under that power line. The Victorian Government did say here a few years ago, when they had bad fires down there and they were started by power lines, the Victorian Government was sued in class actions and they were tying with, I don't know whether they've done it, they were talking about turning power lines off on bad fire danger days in Western Victoria. Now, do you think they're going to turn them off if they get this HUMLINK going and it's a bad day? I think not. But if it goes underground, it won't worry us. Yeah, that's about all I've got to say, I think.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I just ask, sorry, before you leave, Michael, was it? Just to repeat your name for Hansard.
Michael Kingwell.
Kingwell, beautiful, thank you. So we've probably got time for a couple more, if there are any more from the audience that had registered maybe, or as otherwise, if they wish to speak, to come forward.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Committee for today's opportunity to speak. I'm Dave Purcell. I'm a fourth generation farmer from Wondalgas, as well as the owner of an apple thief ciders based in Batlow. We have two properties. The family farm already has 11 towers and the proposed line is actually, we're going to have a Y intersection, which will include then another two lines, which will be, you know, an additional 14 plus towers. So it'd end up with sort of 30 towers. We also have, I also have a tourism development that I'm currently undertaking in Batlow. And with that, we've got a young family that run the orchard, a cider productive facility and a roadside store slash cider house. Saw an opportunity to support tourism, jobs and growth in the region following the bushfires and applied for a co-contribution bushfire recovery grant for which we were successful in receiving. The personal investment in both dollars and labour is significant. However, we want to see the region thrive into the future following the devastation of the fires. The impact threatening of the imposing HUMLINK, TransGrid towers and wires will now directly affect the viability of the investment. I'm now in an unenviable position of trying to determine where the various stages of this development will go ahead. As the Deputy President of the newly formed Batlow-Tumit Rail Trail Committee, further committed to supporting the proposed stage one of this development by factoring in a trackhead on my property, this trail, if developed, will transfer through some of the most picturesque countryside in the state. However, this will be marred by the unsightly vision of towers and wires cutting through the highly productive farming land. I, like many in the district, am planning to replace some of the much-needed accommodation from the fires. However, plans for this now are put on hold because it's a highly effective through the ugly infrastructure if it proceeds to go above ground. Above ground would devalue the whole tourism experience, which especially in Batlow is what's really needed. I implore the committee to conduct undergrounding these towers and wires as this decision would dramatically impact the purpose of tourism investment in the region. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just mindful, Bill, that I did cut you off earlier, so if you wanted to conclude your remarks at all or if there was anyone else, we still have some time left.
John, I did say at the end, we've still got time. Is anyone else? Yeah, yep. Beautiful.
My name's Jim Morgan and I've got property out west and another one just near Lady Smith. My name's Jim Morgan and I've got property out west and another one just near Lady Smith, where the HUMLINK line's coming through. Before I go any further, I'd actually like to acknowledge Dr Joe McGur for his representation. That's the only reason we're here today having this discussion. So that's before I go on. I've been attending all the meetings since day one with TransGrid, because my biggest concern, and you've heard about it today, with aerial operations, firefighting and all that, and I'm a pilot of 32 years, and you have my submission there, I kept my submission brief. And I fly in and out of the property, because it just helps my operation, because I come from out west to run a cattle property at Wagga. TransGrid wouldn't listen to me, a pilot of 32 years. They got Argus consultants to do evaluation of my operations in and out of the airstrip and they said it'd be minimal impact. I don't want any impact. If I hit the power lines, that's one big impact. It's all over. I've got upper pilots to do the evaluation as well. It's just a no-go, it's a no-brainer. But also, if you're evaluating everything that's said here today, when TransGrid employs somebody, they say it's independent, who's paying this independent person? It's TransGrid. So right from the start, you don't get an independent valuation of anything. So I want to just be very brief here, underground fixes a problem. I don't have an issue. I told them right from the start, wrote to them, I've got emails, but they said why they couldn't go underground because of the cost. And the latest email I have is from a TransGrid person, I won't name the person, that he's liaising, and he said, there's no doubt I'm very passionate about flying into my property at Lady Smith. But I replied by saying, I'm passionate about my life. I can't fly in and out of there with 80 metre power lines in front of me. I only have 850 metres from when I get airborne to the power lines. And it just does not work. I've done all the performance charts on the aircraft and it doesn't, it doesn't happen. So the impact, I know that I'm probably an individual here, there's probably not a lot of people fly, but everybody that's spoken today, they have, they've outlined what impact this overhead line has on their life and their ability to work. I'm also a, I was, sorry, at the time of the bushfires, a deputy captain and a crew leader. And I attend help up here at Batlow, because my son-in-law has a property at Wondalgah. He got completely burnt out. And I appreciate what everyone has said about fighting power lines, fighting fires in the vicinity of power lines. You're not sure whether they're on or off. And like the operators have said, that with the helicopters trying to fight these power lines, they have a bucket hanging down and they only have to misjudge and it's all over. And just to finish, it's all pretty nice and soft up there, but when TransGrid want to stick things up in the air, it becomes not so soft. And a case in point, on my property at Lockhart, I had an aerial crop duster flying, he passed over the power lines about 10 times. And then one of his runs, he connected with the power lines. This is in 2021. He brought down 3.5 kilometres of double power lines, broke off two cement poles, got away with his life fortunately, he didn't crash the plane. But that cost that company $27,000 in repairs. And that company wore the whole cost of that, because their excess is greater than that. So, but that was a cost to an individual with power lines. Those power lines are only 240 volt power lines, not very high. So when you look at these 80 metre power lines, also on top of hills, they're massive. So that's about all I'd like to say, if you just take on that board, on board that it has an impact on individuals in all sorts of ways. But in saying underground, like everyone else has said, it takes it right away, there's no impact on me, like someone said today, give them the go-ahead tomorrow. Thanks for your time.
Okay, I would like to add that in our pursuit to try and get these lines considered to go under, to be put underground, the Committee of HUMLINK Action Group has had meetings with the Department of Environment, the Department of Energy and Climate Change, Collef Greg was the person. I wanted Andrew Lewis there to come there and speak to Andrew Lewis, you know, on the phone about everything that's happening. And what we've been after is to, we've had meetings with the top end of TransGrid also in Tumit and in Wagga and with the Andrew Dyer, the Commissioner for Infrastructure, where we have wanted to work together, to go to the federal government to get some of this funding from the Rewiring the Nation initiatives, what the Labor Party came to power on. And we have not been able to get TransGrid, even though they've said it to us when we had initial meetings, when it comes down to it, they would not come with us and back us up. And even to go to Chris Bowen to ask for that money. And I asked, I asked Andrew Lewis, I said, can you come with us, you know, and we will work together? And we have hit that dead wall, you know, everywhere where we've been, in Macquarie Street or even in Parliament House and with TransGrid, you know? It's not as though we've been fighting them, we've been talking with them at that level. And we have not been able to get their support. They, all they've wanted to do is do this overhead power line and, just as I said earlier, be nothing more than a process server, where they've gone through the legal, you know, requirements of right out there and they're trying to hold that over our head, compulsory acquisition of that line. And the thing with compulsory acquisition is that there is the cost of it. Now, we have solicitors that we're dealing with, that are working with people on the energy connect, those people that are having the line resumed, that land resumed there now. And the trouble with it is the cost to the government, and that is put at $300,000 on the legal side of the government to resume a block of land, you know, to resume an easement. And there is a cost also put at that landholder of another 300,000 of legal. So there is, you know, 600,000, which when that land is resumed, the government or the energy, the Energy and Climate Change Department will have to wear, at the end of it, apart from the cost of the compensation, you know? And we've got round about 160 landholders that have not signed the consent to enter and they are going to fight, you know, that's we're going to fight. But that 160 landholders, that's $600,000 each, there is a billion dollars, you know, that we don't, you know, really, we don't want to spend that in litigation, you know? If, this is just why I'm bringing this up, is if it is put underground, none of that will happen. And that's about what I've, you know, what I'll finish off on. I don't want to be there waving the saber at you, but this is the track that we are going down. And those people out there, you know, my members that have put me here to say this, they're supporting it and that's what we're going to do. Okay. And I just recommend you, please put the power line underground. It is clean, it is green and it's unseen.
Yes, very briefly, because we'll move to Dr McGur after this.
I must say, it's Ken Barber again, from, a new immigrant to New South Wales from Victoria. When I was in Victoria, I told you, I worked on every cable, there would be no new transmission lines in Victoria. So we built the link to the DCAL plant. I've worked on the Marinas project, which is going to be 90 kilometres of DC cable through countryside with the approval of the landowners. We've worked very closely with them to ensure that it's going to be a perfect solution. Now, I come to New South Wales, a beautiful country, and I'm devastated to think that you're going to put an overhead transmission, new overhead transmission lines in New South Wales. But what is even worse is that I'm now hearing that the Victorian Government is saying, ah, because they can put overhead lines in New South Wales, we're going to reconsider putting future overhead lines in Victoria. So you have, you have, New South Wales Government have got to do something to address the issue. Sorry.
Thank you, thanks. Well now, thank you. We'll now welcome our next witness, Dr Joe McGur. Dr McGur, I remind you that you do not need to be sworn, as you've already sworn an oath to your office as a Member of Parliament.
I'd make him square again, frankly, but you know that.
And obviously I'll invite you to start by making a short statement if you would like. Please keep to no more than a couple.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And can I begin by thanking you and the committee members who've come today to listen to the community? And thank you for the work that you've done on what is a difficult topic and a complex topic. And you've, certainly the visits this morning were excellent and you've heard the passion in the community in the room. Let me start by saying at the outset that Australia is at the, at the start of a century, a once in a century transformation of energy. We're going from a system where we've relied on coal-fired power plants located in specific coastal locations that send power basically one way into the state, to a distributed network of solar and wind energy backed up by hydro and other battery capacity, distributed throughout the state. Now, you know that, I know, but that's the context in which transmission becomes so important, because for that distributed network to work, we need to have a transmission line. And as the federal minister, I think, has said, 28,000 kilometres of transmission lines will need to be built. And it's in that context that this inquiry and the issues around HUMLINK and undergrounding is so important. We need to get that transmission infrastructure right. And I'm just, in my introduction, I just want to highlight three areas: benefit, cost and community. I've got some reflections on each of those. You've heard already, I think, about the benefits of undergrounding? The benefits in terms of significantly reduced impact on the environment, a significantly reduced fire risk, a significant reduction in the impact on the landscape and consequently on tourism, and of course, the benefit to the communities that host these lines. But in addition, I think today, we've also heard the very definite possibility this may be a more efficient means of transmitting energy, that it's actually been adopted elsewhere in the world precisely because of that, that we need to rethink some pretty old modes and technologies, and this is an opportunity to do that. So that's, that's the benefits. Then is the issue of cost. And on that note, I've got a couple of reflections. The first is, why do we have a system that preferences the cheapest option? That's the system in which TransGrid is operating. And there's been a lot of criticism of TransGrid and I think we need to recognise that they are a company operating in a system that simply drives the cheapest option. When I say cheapest, it's not cheapest in terms of cost and benefits, it's the cheapest cash option. When I first embarked upon this process, can I just say, I was introduced to the concept of the RIT-T test and the consumer input into that. And the consumer input was just basically what will get you the cheapest price for the consumer at the end. That's it. There's no environmental impact, there's no social impact, it's just cost. And so I think that is a huge issue. So that's my second point, cost. And can I ask the committee to consider as well, what will be the impact on electricity prices? And let's say we go to an underground option, as I hope you'll recommend, I think it's important that we're all clear, what will be the impact? Because at the end of the day, that's how this will be funded. I mean, TransGrid get a regulated asset base on which they're allowed to then recoup their benefits by charging consumers. That's how it works. What would be the real impact? And from the study that I've seen here, it could be as little as $4 per consumer per year for the current proposal. And if this was double the cost, that would just be eight. Now, I just think those figures need to be considered by the community in the context of the benefits of undergrounding. And the third point, and I'll finish on this, is community. And the question I have is, why has it been so hard for the community to be heard on this issue? Why do they feel so poorly treated in this process? And why have they had to do so much work to uncover the complexities in this issue? I mean, when I first embarked on this process, when I say embarked on the journey, three and a half years ago, HUMLINK came into this community, reeling at that stage from the impact of the bushfires, I had no idea of the complexity of the electricity system. Since that time, I've gradually learnt more and more. We have a system that's nationally run, regulated, we have a regulator, a network market. But we now, we also have a system in which the private sector, TransGrid, plays a significant role. And the question in all of this has been, it's all great to have market mechanisms, it's great to have the private sector and we sold the poles and wires, et cetera, but where is the government? Where is the protection for citizens in this? You've heard today, and I have been astounded at the work done by people in this community. It's been impressive, the way that these folk, people like Rebecca Tobin and Andrea Strong, have delved and delved and delved on the intricacies and detail of this, it's been astounding. And I take my hat off to them. And I must confess, when I first started this, I was thought undergrounding would be 10 times the cost. I didn't even think about it for a year, because at that point, I was just trying to get TransGrid to talk to people in a civil way. But after about a year or two, Andrea persisted and I started listening to the arguments about undergrounding and it struck me that there was a real discussion to be had here. But what, and I'll leave it on this, what the reflection I have back, I suppose, for the committee is, why has the community had to fight so hard on that? Why have we not, as New South Wales Federal Government, not been more proactive in researching these options and providing the case? In a sense, the tragedy of this in a way, isn't with TransGrid, frankly, it's that TransGrid are operating in a system where it seems to me the government have been very much at arm's length or even missing. So I might leave it at that and I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you. We'll start with the opposition.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr McGur, for appearing today. In relation to your opening statement, you talked about the cost. When I asked the CEO of TransGrid last week about the way that the costs would be amortised, he suggested that over a 20-year period would be appropriate and that if we were to use the figures that are put before the committee, I worked it out to be around $8 per household per bill, would be the difference between the overhead versus the underground of HUMLINK. Now, can you provide some insight into the committee around how you feel your community reflects the imposition of something like HUMLINK on them in order to provide inner-city dwellers a cheaper power bill that is $8 a bill cheaper?
So I think it's a really good point and that you've raised. Clearly, if the undergrounding option's more expensive, it's going to result in an increased cost for consumers. There's two comments I'd make on that. First of all, I'm not in a position to tell you what that First of all, I'm not in a position to tell you what that will be, but it would be really important for our community to know what that will be. Because at the end of the day, we need to make a decision, costs versus benefits, and I think people are entitled to know what will be the cost on their bill. So I think it's important to clarify that. The second comment I would make would be, we need to make this renewable energy infrastructure change, there's no question about that, it's important for the planet. And I don't begrudge people in the cities the benefits of that, but I do think there needs to be a recognition of the impact on regional and rural communities. And so I think we need to have that discussion about additional cost. But the third component of this is that we are setting up this system so that we have got access to renewable energy, which I understand will be cost-effective, sustainable and better for the planet. Now, I would like to know what the net effect would be if we're accessing renewable energies. And look, in the early days, the argument was, we're going to connect to South Australia through Project Energy Connect, that will come through to Snowy Hydro because that energy, there was energy in South Australia at different times of the market, which is free. There's so much energy, so much wind, so much solar, Snowy Hydro can use that to pump the hydro up at cheap cost. If we're going to access energy that's cost-effective, sure, there'll be a cost associated with undergrounding, but what would be the benefit, what are going to be the benefits of access to renewable energy, which should be cheaper, I would have thought, than coal-fired or other alternative sources of energy? So I don't have the data on that, but the point and the reason why, so, one of the reasons I was so keen on this inquiry was to make it clear, make those discussions clear. This is how it's going to be paid for, these will be the benefits and these will be the cost to the consumer.
You've said in your opening statement, this has been a three and a half year journey for you and your community. In fact, I'd say really our community, and I know the issues as much as anybody in the Can you, I guess, provide some insight to the committee as to how many of the members, when looking at this issue, have advocated for overhead power lines?
How many members of the community?
Have advocated for overhead power lines?
Well, they've not approached me.
Has anybody?
No, no one's approached me in that respect, I have to say.
Has it been solely, I guess, one-way traffic in having these things undergrounded?
Look, certainly all the contact that I've had with the community, the representations that have been made to me have all been around trying to make sure that undergrounding occurs in this community.
Have you seen an issue that has been, I guess, this one-sided in relation to the advocacy that's been presented to you as a member of parliament?
Well, certainly from my community's point of view, and particularly for the eastern part of the Wogar LGA and then Snowy Valleys, look, the community's view about this has been, I would have thought, nearly unanimous. But look, not, look, I do acknowledge that I have obviously in the last year particularly been advocating to look at undergrounding and been advocating to have an inquiry since the election. So it may well be, to be fair, that people haven't approached me because they know my views. But look, I've travelled around this community since the fires and the aftermath of the fires, particularly in Snowy Valleys, I'm just frequently here talking to people and this is the number one issue in the communities I visit. Yep.
In, in that respect then, given that, I guess, in relation to the advocacy that's been presented to you on the issue, and it is, I guess, clearly in support of undergrounding, do you feel that the community was heard by TransGrid? Do you think that TransGrid have accepted that view of the community? Or have they continued to push through with a master plan that perhaps sidelines what the community has put forward as what they would want out of this project?
So that's a, that's a very insightful question. And in answering it, can I just, I want to make, I want to reflect on two aspects of this. The first is, the consultation with community and landholders about the project right from the start. And in the early days with TransGrid, in the aftermath of the fires, it was truly appalling, the feedback that I got. And I do want to acknowledge that TransGrid undertook a review of its community consultation process and they got Rod Stowe, the former Director of Fair Trading Commissioner to assist with that. And his report was scathing, and I think it's still available on the TransGrid website. And TransGrid, to their credit, accepted all of the recommendations of that report and significantly changed their consultation process. And I will, I do think it improved the consultation process. Now, you've heard today, a number of members of the community have participated in community consultation groups and have raised concerns about not being heard. And I still think that is an issue and that is the feedback that I get. But I do want to acknowledge that TransGrid have taken steps to try and improve that consultation process. And to their credit, they funded the undergrounding study and they also funded not only their own consultants, but consultants to work with the community representatives. And so I acknowledge that they've also done that. So that's an example to me of their listening to the community, right? I do think there is an issue with the turnover of their personnel and they are a large corporation. But my second point is more relevant, it's not more relevant, sorry, my second point is connected to that, but will highlight it, and that is, they are operating within a system. They are operating within this framework, they're a cog in the wheel. And basically, they have to deliver a project that is the cheapest. They deliver a project that's approved through the RIT-T process and the PACER process and the EMA, it's got to be the cheapest project. They don't have the capacity, as I understand it, to go back and advocate because they'll be accused of gold, advocating for undergrounding, because they'll be accused of gold plating. They're supposed to just come up with the cheapest. And I just don't think the system, the way it's currently constructed, has room to take into account of environment or social impact of this infrastructure. That is the, you know, and if we go after TransGrid, we'll miss the point here because every other community will be suffering the same thing. We live in a system where we have not factored in environmental and social impact of this infrastructure. That's the key. So yes, I think TransGrid could do a lot more in terms of its consultation, but I do want to acknowledge the work of Brett Redmond and his team in trying to address community consultation, in doing the undergrounding study. I think it's important, I recognise that and certainly, they've certainly worked to keep me informed. Can I just say that? But, but have they been perfect? No. Could they improve? Definitely. Yes, there is a large turnover of staff that even I've observed from time to time. So that's part of being a big company, they are run by overseas interests. And at the end of the day, at the end of the day, they operate in a system where they just have to deliver, this is my understanding, the cheapest project. And by cheapest, it's just the immediate cheap cost so that the consumer pays the least possible. And of course, that doesn't take into account the effect on community or the environmental or social degradation that might be associated with it.
Thanks. We'll move to the correspondents' questions.
Thanks, Jo, and thanks for all your work advocating for the community. And you're certainly a diplomat in terms of, or you've just said about TransGrid, I think, in terms of compared to what a lot of your constituents have just said about them. But somebody mentioned the survey that you undertook that, you know, came back with that extraordinary statistic in terms of mental health impacts a couple of years ago now. Would you care to talk about that survey more broadly and what you have identified as well as a local member over the following couple of years in terms of the impact of potential Hume Link on the community?
Yeah, thank you for that question. Look, we undertook that survey, look, I think, I'll have to go back and check my records, but I think it was towards the end of 2020. And it was, to be honest, and look, it wasn't a scientific process, okay? But I did want to get feedback from people affected by the discussions around Hume at that stage about how it had affected them. And it was pretty clear from the results of the survey that people were very negatively affected. And that reflected my own personal experience of meeting with and talking to landowners. That was, look, that's probably two years ago now. At that stage, people were talking about uncertainty, worry about the future, what is it going to be? And also, they're also, the way the consultation process was being undertaken, they were being spoken to individually. So there was this component, and of course, I think TransGrid's approach was to say, well, you can't talk to your neighbour and so there was no shared information. That, in a community that builds distrust, so that was also a stressful point. But since that time, of course, the whole process has dragged on, there's been ongoing uncertainty and all of those mental health effects have been much worse. And you've heard from members of the community today about the effect on them, they've been very resilient, but there's no question, it's really eating away at people. And it's heartbreaking to hear it, but look, I also want to acknowledge their courage and also the hard work that they've done to try and get the facts behind this. And I think you've heard today, people's presentations and representations have been considered. I mean, people have thought this through, they've done work in an incredibly difficult area to research and they've done that. But look, to your basic point, what has been the effect on the people, the landholders in particular, it's been very, very distressing and ongoing. And look, if we'd had, if we'd been able to consider undergrounding right from the start, I just don't think we would be at this point now. And, you know, the more you hear about the undergrounding options, what's being done overseas, the question really is, why did we have a system where that wasn't, you know, why was that tossed out right at the start? Why weren't we looking at sensibly? Why weren't we having a discussion with the community and saying, this is the benefits, this is the cost, and this is why we're going this way? It was just like, no, no, 10 times the cost, can't do it. And yeah, I think looking back on it, that's, that's been a sad, a sad part of this process.
Thank you. I want to talk to you a bit about the politics of this, Jo. So clearly, there's, this is going to be a political decision ultimately. So from where you sit within, you know, you're in the lower house, whatever, independent, do you think that there is the political will within the government to look at this and to advocate and make it happen? And if not, what do you think can be done? I'm particularly interested, so we talked the politics, just in case my time runs out, and then what recommendations would you like to see come out of this committee? I should have given you advance notice of the recommendations, sorry about that.
The, the, the politics, I think people, I think our country and our nation is committed to a renewable energy future and we need to, we need to stay the course on that, no question about that. As one of the witnesses said earlier today, we're doing all this for the benefit in a way of the environment and of the planet. Why are we choosing a second-rate environmentally destructive option to do it? I think what's been missing from this debate has been the facts. What is the cost? What are the benefits? You know, what is the reality? Do we need to, should we be undergrounding everywhere? Project Energy Connect is currently under construction, it's over, it's overground. I was hoping, what I hoped out of this inquiry was to get those facts first and foremost. What would be the cost for consumers? What will be the benefits? Okay. My view is that once that becomes clear, I think, if we're talking about a cost that's two or three times, that essentially is going to be amortised over the life of the project, we should be having that discussion with the community. We should be saying, this will be the cost on your power bills, but the outcome is there'll be less environmental destruction, there's less risk of bushfires and actually more efficient, more efficient supply of electricity. We will build, we will, we will be building a modern transmission system. Now, my view is that, my view is that that sort of discussion is the sort of sensible discussion we should have. And if we can have that discussion, I think the government would be prepared to consider that. I definitely want to see the government involved in this. And certainly, I have to say, I met with Chris Bowen, with Christie McBain on behalf of some residents. At that point, Chris Bowen said, well, it's 10 times the cost, we can't possibly consider that. And we said, well, if it's, what if it's two to three times the cost? And I hope I'm not verbally him, but he said, well, you know, that's actually something we need to look at. So my view is to ask the committee, one, can we get the facts about those costs? And two, if we are talking about a cost like that, then I think it needs to go to government with a serious consideration, even with the extra cost. We need to be going to government and saying, look, this really needs to be seriously considered. And this inquiry will be seminal for the rest of the country. Because this is the first opportunity parliamentary inquiries had to look at undergrounding. And this is going to be something that communities are going to be facing everywhere in our nation. And look, the way I've heard it presented to me, the undergrounding option could seriously be so much better for energy transmission, so much better for communities, the environment, people will be accepting of it. Why wouldn't we go down that path? Hope that's answered, I hope I've been clear about that.
Thank you. We'll move to government questions.
Thanks, Chair. So something I'm really keen to understand as a government member is, where are we at in this process and how could the process be changed? For example, if the committee was ultimately of the view that it should be changed. And we've obviously heard evidence that, from the expert today, certainly one of them, maybe two of them, that they share TransGrid's view that the regulator would not approve undergrounding. We've also heard evidence that contracts have been struck for construction of above-ground lines. And we've also heard evidence, which I think is in dispute, certainly from the evidence that we've heard today, that in the view of TransGrid, this project has to be finished by 2026 and the power grid that's functioning is at threat if it's not. And I accept that that's certainly disputed. But I'm keen to understand, in that regulatory context, what would have to change in order for the regulator to, to approve undergrounding? And has this process, which started some three and a half years ago, but would, I'm certainly sure have been planned earlier than that, has this process gone too far for the egg to be unscrambled? I'm interested in your thoughts on those two things. What has to change in the regulatory structure? How would it change and have we come too far? And I suppose that's quite a frank question that I pose, that maybe we have, but I think we need to be upfront and engage with that because it's a new government. And obviously, Ms. Fenn has talked about the politics, there are politics in this. It's a new government, but it's an old issue. So I just want to put all of that on the table for your comment.
So I'm certainly not expert enough to comment on where this is in the process. My understanding is that TransGrid are preparing the environmental impact statement submissions to go to the New South Wales government for approval of that part of the project. I also understand that they have begun some procurement processes, but I'm not, I'm not clear how far advanced they are and what materials have been ordered. I'm also aware that they contend this needs to be built by 2026 and there is a lot of nervousness around coal-fired stations failing and the need to shore up energy. However, Snowy Hydro will not be finished till 2029 or 2030. This is being built mainly for Snowy Hydro. I mean, there are, there is a 330 KV line already that can take energy from South Australia. I understand that the purpose of this is to connect to Snowy Hydro as the battery so it can get that energy in and provide that energy out. So I would have thought we have time to reconsider this. The question is, how do you reconsider it? And it comes back to the regulatory framework in which the market is operating. And it's not clear to me what control or otherwise, federal or state government has over that. But that in itself should be raising alarm bells. I mean, literally, do we have an electricity market system like this that has been set up on set and forget, where the government is just not in a position to interfere in terms of the wellbeing of its communities? Now, surely that's not the case, but you would think from what I've, the reactions to this, that actually maybe that is the case. Now, I'm not excluding that, please, I'm not saying that that's what happened. It looks to me like we have this national system, it's all set up, there's an integrated system plan, it was approved, maybe the government's approved it, the state government's approved it, but... But at the end of the day, I come back to that point, that the test for investment in the infrastructure that TransGrid are supposed to meet has to be cheapest cost. There's no consideration of impact on community, no consideration of impact on the environment. Cheapest cost, no even consideration of investing a bit more to get a better system. So I can't answer you where and how we would influence that. But I do raise the question, it's a very big concern to me that this process has just gone past a point where the government can actually say, hold on, we need this to be reconsidered. That would be extreme concern. And that clearly has implications for every other community that's going to be facing transmission infrastructure. It means basically, we have a system set up that basically will deliver the cheapest, but not the best option. And if that's the case, that should be concerning all of us. Now, not saying it is the case, but the way federal and state governments seem to have interacted with it so far, it's a little bit like set and forget. So that is something that would be important to clarify. And I, as I say, I surely would have thought it was possible for the federal government, and perhaps in cooperation with the states, to reconfigure that regulatory test for investment in a way that takes into account environment and social factors. And do we have time to do that? Look, I think we always, we should always have time to do the right thing. And given the delays with Snowy Hydro, I think we do have an opportunity there. As I say, that's an opinion, it's not, I'm not an expert in that area, I want to stay away from an expert view.
Thank you. That's my question, Chair.
Thanks, Dr Magir. We've heard numerous different views about costs that have been sort of thrown around throughout the length of this inquiry in terms of, you know, getting, and you mentioned yourself the importance of getting actual, like getting some actual figures on costs. Some of the, some of the issues have been around costs of undergrounding versus overhead powerlines and not knowing what those actual costs are. Have you got any final thoughts on that matter?
I think it's, I think it should be concerning the committee. It certainly concerns me that we don't seem to be able to get those costs and that information. I mean, this is possibly the biggest challenge we face as a nation in the next decade, is getting the electricity generation and transmission right. Surely, we have a mechanism as a state government to source the information we need to get the accurate costs on this. And then the implications that will have for consumers, surely we can source that information. Surely, we can bend our minds to that. And, and look, frankly, we need to. Because if this is the best option, and I'm confident that it is the best option, then we need to find a way to do it. Because we're talking about not even the next generation, we're talking about next century getting it right. So let's get it right.
Thank you. That concludes the time for today. Thank you for attending the hearing, Dr Magir. Committee members may have additional questions for you after the hearing. And the committee has resolved that the answers to these, along with any answers to questions taken on notice today, be returned within seven days. The secretariat will contact you in relation to these questions.
Thank you, thank you, thank you very much.
That concludes today's hearing. Thank you all.